There you go.
There you go. I like that.
Glad your candy's ready?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I see. We never close, but all right. But we'll let you know. How many?
Yeah, let me know.
It turns out we couldn't do anything to work out. There is not a big... The country is coming away because it is a little big.
Confidence, sorry.
Yeah. It's an economy. Get hard to send everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're all in finance, yeah. 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 Yeah.
It turned out we couldn't do anything to work out. Yeah. There is not a big... The country is coming away because it is a little big.
Confidence, sorry.
Yeah. It's an economy. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I think it'd be nice to last meeting and get out of here on time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. I can tell they can't do much with what he's already doing. He can't fire him. Time.
Yeah. 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 There you go. Yeah. 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 Keith?
Hey.
Hey, what's up?
What's up?
I'm just sitting here. Yeah. Cool. I did play golf today. In an alley. A little make field, make field, high league. Tagged hard.
Nice.
It's a couple courses early.
I played this course tomorrow, my friend.
She in a block?
Very good.
Very good.
We got it received a member day.
You'll... You will not be disappointed, won't be. They have good food at the restaurant. But you're living large. You're living large. Yeah. 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 Okay. Yeah. 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 Did they beat them up or what? Yeah. Anybody who works there.
Feature. Yeah. 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 Take questions, the audience?
Yeah. Yeah. I have a question. Yeah. 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 Hello.
Who are you?
Good, how are you, Alice?
Good.
Thank you for emailing me.
Sure. Yeah. 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 We do? Okay. Yeah. 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 Okay. So, Alice. So, when we need a break? Just this? Okay. 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 We did the first reading before, if you remember. Okay.
Did anybody sign up for the conference?
Everybody did. Everybody did, yes.
Yeah. I filled out all the forms. Oh, good. Okay. Okay. I'm also still. Okay. I honestly didn't feel confident. But I spent a couple hours trying to do it. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
We'll be so happy.
Sure. It was my album about. Yeah. 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 I did. I did. I did. I did. I'm sure. Yeah. 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 We'll be so happy. Yeah. 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 I didn't even... No, no. That's fine. They had to do this.
I did.
Who knows? It was just that time.
I'll be looking for it. I did. I did. I did. I saw this way out. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting is being recorded by the board secretary. We'd like to start with the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone's here except for Mr. Anderson. Okay. We'll start off with the approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was held on May 10, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2018 meeting? Mr. Kern, a second?
Second.
Ms. Mitchell, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we will have the interviews for the open board seat. As you know, Dr. Sedikam resigned, so we have four people that have signed up to possibly be appointed to the seat vacated by Dr. Sedikam. The way the process is going to work tonight is that each candidate will have 10 minutes to summarize his or her background, while the other candidates wait in the lobby. During those 10 minutes, they will read their statements, and then, if there's time, the board members can ask questions of each candidate. Nominations will then be made by the board to fill the vacated seat, and then a vote will take place. In the event of a tie vote, which is a no vote, the board will vote on the next candidate, and there does need to be five votes to appoint the person. Once a candidate receives the majority of vote, he or she will be given the oath of office by the board secretary, who is a noted republic, and that person will take their seat immediately and participate in tonight's meeting.
Actually, it's not a majority of votes. It's got to be five or seven.
Five.
That was... Pardon? But he said majority this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Garden. Okay. So, we have four applications. The list of candidates are Mr... I'm sorry.
Dell James.
Excuse me. Mr. Dell James, Mr. Christopher Spear, Mr. Leo Barnaby, and Mr. Robert Di Liberto. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly. Okay. Did we just go down? Okay.
It was the order we were supposed to keep them.
Mr. James, would you like to approach the podium and give your statement, and would the other three candidates please move to the lobby? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. I was not prepared for the 10 minutes when the personal statement... I did write a little something.
You don't have to take 10 whole minutes. You make it as brief as you want.
Yes. Wait. Hello and good evening. My name is Dell James, resident of Milford Township, and I would like to offer my name for consideration in serving out the balance of the vacated school board director's term. In researching the role of interim school board director, I found something that really resonated with me. That is a comment that said that a school board should, at the very least, instill public confidence. Currently, that confidence has been shaken. Recently, our community has experienced an incredible amount of change. We have closed a productive middle school. Students and parents were compelled to adjust to new schools and busing schedules. Teachers have been put in the position of uncertainty as to where they will teach or even if they will be teaching in our community at all. Our whole community has been forced to accept increases in our school taxes year after year, and most recently, the unfortunate resignation of a school board director. This is too much change. While change is certainly inevitable, it is our responsibility to manage that change and make it productive. I believe that we are truly blessed to have so many wonderful children attending our community's schools. I recently attended a middle school adaptation of the Addams Family musical. Just one example of the many opportunities that our kids are afforded here in Quakertown. This event showcased how gifted our students truly are. Not only that, but the show also provided our children with an opportunity to develop the self-confidence needed to stand on a stage in front of hundreds of people and act and sing and dance their hearts out. We should never take for granted the children of our community. Our community has entrusted to this board to ensure their prosperity. I believe that we have great schools here in Quakertown, the primary reason why my wife and I decided to move here 14 years ago. Great schools make positive impacts on those who attend them, and who is more responsible for the positive impact on our schools have on our children than their teachers? A great school is not about the building, but about the teachers, and that would include the counselors, nurses, assistant teachers, and even administrators. Our great teachers deserve our support to ensure that they have stability in their careers. The threat of furloughs and early retirement force our teachers' focus away from their calling, which is to challenge, inspire, and encourage all of our children to be exceptional. Our undivided support of our teachers can never be brought into question. Great schools cost money. In our current political and financial circumstances, it is unlikely that someone will come to our financial rescue. However, we cannot continue to raise taxes year after year to fill holes in the school budget, increase that some of us simply cannot afford. This money comes from not only our own pockets, but the pockets of our neighbors, some of whom are on fixed budgets and others who are struggling to make ends meet. This cannot continue. Whether I am chosen as a member of this board or not, that will not change the fact that we will always be confronted with challenges. All of us, the whole community, must work together to find solutions and to, at the very least, instill public confidence. Thank you, and that's the end of my prepared comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Does any of the board members have any questions of Mr. James? That was very good. Do you have any experience with public education, perchance?
Other than attending public schools? No. I think that this is a calling for civic responsibility, so as it relates to administering a school, I would say I am a citizen.
Are you familiar with our... The challenges with the... I'm not sure how much you've attended our meetings or been...
I've attended a number of them.
So, you certainly resonate with a lot of things about the big tug-of-war that we have in terms of the external forces that cost a lot of money and the desire to keep taxes down and why do we keep increasing them? Do you have any sense of how you might balance those two things if you were in our position?
I understand that we have a very difficult situation because we do have a wonderful school, great schools, great music program. Everyone wants to do the best for their kids, but at the same time, the taxes keep rising and rising. And I think, on one hand, it's easy to comment that, well, it's a fraction. It's a small number. But it's a small number that keeps being repeated. So, that is the real difficult case. We don't want to tighten the budget so much that the children suffer, but something has to be done to stop the increases year after year. And maybe that means just limiting ourselves. We can't afford to pay for everything in our house, so when we make our own home budget, you know, if the kids want to go to Hawaii, while it's still there, maybe that's just something we cannot afford, and so we go to the beach instead. I don't know the details. I've looked at some of the financial reports, and they're very big dollar amounts. And we have a lot of kids. We have a lot of buildings, and a lot of teachers are relying on the board. So, it is the difficult question. How do you balance both? Don't have the answer. I'd like to try, though.
What is your personal opinion on philosophy on organized labor? And I have a second follow-up question to that.
On organized labor? I support organized labor. I think it's an opportunity
I think it's an opportunity for people to band together, to get fair treatment. I don't see a problem with it. I think it's fine.
What is your personal opinion on charter schools?
I don't believe I have an opinion on charter schools. My kids went to public school, PAF, and Milford, and now my daughter is in the high school and my son is in Strayer.
Do you feel that-
Support public schools.
Thank you. Do you feel that you bring any particular special qualities or skills that would be of a great benefit to Quakertown Community School District?
A great benefit, I think, would have to be judged after there was success, but at my job, I work for an organization, the group inside the company where I'm at, we do global program management, so I am familiar with program management and governance. I know that this is a big part of what the board does is governance and program management, so I have that as a background.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much for your interest in being a board member. I would just be interested in knowing, what will be your priorities if you were appointed to this position for the district?
I think the first thing, or the most important thing, would be to calm, calm the community. There's been a lot of change, and I commented in change, and it makes people worried. It makes people worried, the parents, the teachers, and that actually shows up with the kids. The kids are a reflection of their parents and their opinions, and so, you know, communication, I think, would be something that I think should be a focus, to let people know that the board is actually working for them. And maybe the answers, some of the decisions that the board has to make are difficult ones, but the base, the foundation of those decisions is what is best for the kids and the community.
Okay. Okay. We have just about out of time, so maybe one more quick question? You're good? Okay.
I have a question. What is your position on-
Can I hear the question?
Sorry. I am- Okay, there we go. What is your position on preserving extracurricular activities?
Well, in my family, both my kids go to the Quakertown Community Schools. Both of them participate in extracurricular activities. One is better at their schoolwork, scholastically, than the other one is. I would like maybe the teachers to, or maybe we should limit those who are not so good. I guess maybe that's a, I think there was a comment, if your grades are not at a certain level, that you shouldn't be participating in some of the athletic events. But we have a jazz band that, wow, I think could play anywhere. My kids play in basketball and football. My daughter sings in the choir. I think it's all wonderful. These opportunities that the kids have to participate in these extracurricular activities, just like that play, on the surface, it's a great time. We get out, we get to see the kids sing and dance, but behind that is teamwork, working towards a goal, having the self-confidence, developing self-confidence, which is super important, the ability to speak in front of a people, a crowd, to sing and dance. Who of us can actually do that and not, and not mess up? That was a great thing. I think, I mean, it's something that should be fully supported. On the other hand, everything costs money, so, you know, you gotta balance it.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Sorry, that was a little long-winded.
That's okay. If you would, sir, and thank you very much for your, for your time and your comments and your interest. If you would, go out to the lobby and ask Mr. Spears to come in?
Thank you.
Thank you. Spears, excuse me.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to come here tonight to apply for the open school board seat. For the last year and a half, I've attended almost every school board meeting and voiced numerous concerns, either from me or relaying them from various teachers, students, and parents. In all of these comments and concerns that I have brought up, there was one underlying issue that ties them all together. It's fear. Fear that our school's foundations have started to move away from what they once were. Fear that the students' needs are no longer first on the list of issues that the school board is focusing on. Fear that the teachers will be moved around like Tetris pieces out of classrooms and subjects that some have been in for 10-plus years and saddled with more and more students every year. If I were able to gain this vote tonight, I would help to bridge this communications gap and help alleviate these fears and work toward a stronger bond between the board, administration, teachers, and students. I have an almost obsessive desire to weigh all possible alternatives to solutions. I am always the person that, when faced with a tough challenge, dives right in, headfirst to meet it face by, face to face. I thrive on solving difficult problems and remain calm when emotions are raised around me. I am someone who likes to evaluate different problems from multiple angles and often will focus on the disadvantaged side of arguments. I believe I could be a strong asset to this board and would be an excellent coworker with the other eight members here now. Sorry, I'm not used to reading prepared statements like this. It's been a long time. There are real issues that this district is facing in terms of its budget, and I would love the opportunity to help solve them. Currently, this district is third highest in Bucks County for taxes, at $1,940 per $100,000 in property value. Those are 2015-16 numbers. This trend of endless tax hikes cannot continue, but neither can these endless cuts to the schools. If there are too many more cuts to this district, it will begin to bleed out, and the tax base will start to shrink when people no longer want to move here. There is a balance, and I would like to work together with all the board members to find that balance. There's one other point I want to emphasize here tonight. There is a trend sweeping Pennsylvania and the nation as a whole and its publicly-funded charter schools. Quakertown has held its own so far with only 2.6, or 136, students attending them full-time now. The state average is 8.1%, though. That's higher than all of the neighboring states. Charter schools exist in districts that are failing their students. Maryland, which has a much higher rated school system than Pennsylvania's, only has 2.17% of its students in charters. If too many students leave for charters, it will devastate this school district's finances. We need to provide the best possible schools for all of our kids to compete with these charter schools. If we don't provide the best schools in the area, students will start to look elsewhere, and that will only cause further cuts to our already wounded district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Would anybody like to ask any questions of Mr. Spear? Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Spear, the following is a quote from you off of a social media post regarding the closing of Milford Middle School. I should have picked it up then, that this was not about the condition of the buildings, but it was all about firing teachers. How many teachers have been fired as a direct result of closing Milford Middle School?
Zero.
Or Tohicken Valley?
But-
How many were, how many were furloughed as a direct result of closing Milford Middle School and Tohicken Valley Middle School, or Elementary School?
Zero were fired, but-
Okay, now, to your point, here's the thing. The school board, the school district this year, the closing budgetary numbers is, we have about $4 million excess because of the budget we planned to do without closing the schools, and now we've closed them, and we're much better off than we were before. That was the intent of the previous board. Why was it a bad thing to close these schools, in your opinion?
My opinion is, is that it was a bad thing because there were other options. This was not the only option to get to these, to these ends. You know, I even proposed some different options that we could have done, essentially saving Milford temporarily, using other schools, moving students around only once, and there were other options. That's, that's all I really wanted to bring up there, is that I don't necessarily disagree with the budget cuts, or with budget cuts that needed to be done. We could not take from the fund balance, we could not raise the taxes any higher, but there were other answers, there were other means to get to this endpoint, and we're still not at the endpoint. There's still room to go.
Chris, knowing what you know, and so talk to me, talk me through how, how you will bridge that, that sort of that gap between understanding that taxes are, that continue to rise are a problem from, on one hand, and-
Yeah.
And recognizing that if you continue to decimate the school system, we risk losing the community as we know it today. Kids go to charter schools, the tax base changes, people move out of the district who are paying good taxes now. So how do you, how do you balance that? What, like, and how do you bridge the gap between, you know, dissenting opinions on that?
I believe there is a lot of, of issues that started with original communications. You know, back a few months ago, when you were talking of furloughing teachers, and then the, the point was brought up about a new reading agenda that was coming in that cost $400,000, and one of the school board members, I believe it was Mr. Anderson, had said, well, the teachers voted on that new agenda, or that new reading program, so they would have done it. The communications gap that I was talking about bridging, that could help with the budgetary things were, if the teachers had known during that time, during the time when they were approving a new $400,000 reading program, that it's possible that teachers could be laid off down the road, they may reconsider that, and they say, you know what, maybe we can hold that reading program for one more year, two more years. You know, back when I went to school, I think my, all my history books were two presidents behind. I'm sure waiting an extra year or two to implement a new reading program wouldn't have hurt the district, and if it would have saved teachers for possible one more year, they probably would have voted different, or gave a different suggestion to saying that. But it, it starts with little things like that, and that, that's one of the communication issues that I was talking about. Now, bridging the gap between the taxes and stuff, that's a much harder thing. I really would need to see more data, and like I said, when I quoted the data for the tax rates here, I have them from the 2015-16 school year, you know. I don't have the current numbers, and I can't just get those off of the internet, and they are on some of the district sites, but most of them are older, too, so.
You've always struck me as someone who's prepared and does your homework, so, so how, how often are you spent thinking about or, or doing something on behalf of trying to figure out how to assist, giving us information up here and finding your data and those things?
Most of the data that, that I would research, and I am a bit obsessive when it comes to a lot of things, like I will research something, like sometimes I'll spend seven, eight hours in one day doing this, and maybe it's a problem I have, but I do tend to do this sometimes. But usually, it would start from a comment that was made, or a question that was either brought up online or at a school board meeting, that, that said, hey, you know, is this the way this has to happen? And I would look up different alternatives to say, this could happen, this could happen, this could happen. And a lot of times, I was interjecting my opinion into the matter, and a lot of posts that I put online were all my opinion, but I still stand by every one of them and say, it may not have been the right answer, like, like when I was talking about different ways, different options for closing Milford. I must have given 30 different options for ways we could have probably saved the same amount of money. You know, without sitting on this board, though, all I'm doing is throwing out opinions. I think that if I were sitting on the board, I could help make these decisions, maybe just by throwing out opinions in meetings, but, you know, at least my opinions come backed with some facts and some knowledge.
Okay. Mr. Spear, thank you very much for your time. Can I ask one more question? Real, real quick. Just, you answered my first two questions that I'm gonna ask everybody. What particular qualities or, you know, skills do you think that you can bring to the board with a budget this size, you know, and bring to us as a, you know?
Well, budgets or facilities, as far as facilities with this new construction project going on with Nightig, that is what I've been doing at work for the past 25 years. I designed, I helped, I've worked through the design and build, and I dealt with townships, permits, all kinds of things for multiple construction projects, two large ones, and I had my hands in every part of it from beginning to end, so I believe I could be of some help that way. As far as the budgets, just, again, my obsessive compulsion with going over numbers, going over as many alternatives as possible to find the best possible answer, and, you know, I know I'm somebody that will, will throw 20 ideas out at something, and I'm not necessarily married to any one of them, you know? I can be told no.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. If you would be so kind as to ask Mr. Barnaby to come in?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time's yours.
First off, I'd like to apologize for my raspy voice this evening, but good evening to you all, and thank you for this opportunity. As a graduating senior at Quakertown Community High School, I've been provided so many wonderful opportunities from kindergarten all the way through my senior year here in our school district, and I hope to use my understandings as a student who has experienced a Quakertown education to provide this board with a unique perspective. To begin, I would like to explain how I would serve as a school board director while also enrolled as a student at Fordham University in Manhattan. As a prospective and now admitted student at Fordham, I attend many events at the university, thus I am already commuting to New York a few times each month. My commute will be facilitated as Fordham allows any student who wishes to park their car on campus, and I am arranging to have no classes on Thursday afternoon or all-day Friday. My attendance at committee meetings and board meetings will not be an issue. As a student, this year alone, my schedule was busy to say the least. Between conferences, meetings, and other commitments I had to fulfill, I finished my year with a grade of A in all classes, including my two dual enrollment courses at Moravian College, and I intend to exercise this same work ethic and diligence next year in all my endeavors, especially should I become a board director. As a member of this board, I would look to bring my fresh perspective from being a student in Quakertown for my entire educational career to the table. I recognize the rapidly expanding uses of technology in our curricula and the need to train students on how to use such technology. Tonight, you are approving several English textbooks. I recognize the need for textbooks that will provide students with the clearest medium to learn new material. As the son of a school district director of operations, I recognize the need to house our students in comfortable and secure facilities while carefully analyzing our budget expenditures. Also, the son of a former teacher, I recognize the value that our educators provide to young developing minds. The sibling of a freshman at our high school, I recognize the skills our district provides to students in preparation for higher education. I also recognize the importance of supporting our guidance program to help our students through their college application process in any way possible. As a cross-country runner at the high school, I recognize the importance of our extracurricular programs for all students and the camaraderie that one can gain from participating in a sport. And finally, as a student myself, I recognize the integral function of schools in our community, whether through civic engagement or students' own outreach. I continue to enjoy participating in the board meetings as the student representative, and I would like to continue this after graduation. Politics and government is a true passion of mine, and I am cognizant of the fact that serving on a body such as this school board will help me to energize my passion to help our community. I know that all of my aforementioned qualities can be prominently displayed on this school board, and I understand that serving as a board director deeply affects the lives of community members and students alike. Looking at all perspectives, I aim to make decisions on a basis of what is best for students, employers, and our community as a whole. As a board member, many of these decisions are not easily made, but it is the job of a board director to make the best decision with these groups in mind, even when it ostensibly may not seem so. I believe that I can use this position to give back to a community which has given me so many opportunities, and with that in mind, I will be honored to serve as a board of school director. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Mr. Barnaby, what was your opinion of the board's decision last year to close Milford and Tohicken Valley Elementary School?
Well, I think that anytime we're considering closing facilities, especially schools, that decision needs to be looked at very carefully, because, as I just said, schools are certainly an integral feature in the communities where they're located. Looking back on it, I can't give a definitive answer of what I would have voted, as I was not a board member at the time. I would obviously, if I was a board member, I would like to see committee input, I would like to use my own resources and my own time to investigate how we could possibly save funding other ways, but at the end of the day, that decision was made, and I think right now, the importance is to ensure that we can move forward in a least disruptive way to students and our employers.
I have a question. Since you'll be in college, and congratulations on that up at Fordham, very good school, there are additional responsibilities you'll have besides board meetings. Are you going to be willing and able to follow through on those additional committee responsibilities while you're in college?
Absolutely. I think with a reasonable timeframe that I'm looking at, and if I know what is coming ahead of me, as I've explained, I'll be able to have full attendance at all committee meetings, board meetings, and anything extra that this district needs. And furthermore, as I said when I was speaking, I'm working out having my Fridays off of college, so I will be able to come in the district, talk to students, administrators, other board members if needed, and really be of assistance in any way possible.
What is your opinion on, you're gonna get my three questions that I'm gonna ask everybody. What is your opinion on organized labor? Start with-
You have two, two questions.
What is your position on organized labor, please?
Well, obviously, I think that the, the unionized labor in this district, especially the teachers, are a very important part of this district, and many teachers have been very special to me in my life. They've, some of them have literally changed the course of my life and really influenced me in what I'd like to do when I grow up. In terms of organized labor specifically, I think that it's always important for the board to develop a great relationship with the union and the union leaders to determine the contracts, payment based on everything, down from rates of inflation and on upwards. And in my understanding, that agreement with the teachers' union specifically stands until 2021, so at that point, I would, that would be when I would look into, obviously, you know, making a new agreement with the teachers and developing what that would be at that time, if that is your question.
What is your stance on publicly funded charter schools?
Well, the data's pretty clear, put out by PSBA and other organizations, that most Pennsylvanians, and especially parents of children in public schools, don't support private school vouchers with public taxpayer money. So I think that we, as a board, should support that position, because it's obviously what our constituents believe.
And my last question, do you believe that you bring any particular qualities or skills to the Quakertown Community School District that you think will help?
Well, as I've said, as a student, I'm fresh out of the system. I see what happens every day in this school district. I see what works, I see what doesn't. I see the effect of class size on certain classes. I, I really see the, the inner workings of the high school in a way that not many other people do, and that would really be a unique opportunity to see on a school board.
Have you ever had a Friday night at college?
I have not.
And Thursday night here?
Well, I can tell you, I've had many Thursday nights here, but not a Friday night in college. But I'm certain that if, if I was on the board, I would make sure to be here, and this would be my first and foremost commitment.
I absolutely applaud you for standing up and, and even giving it a shot to come out and, and serve. So my one question to you is, recognizing that there's a balance between, you know, the things you talked about, which were the teachers and the buildings and the academics, and a tax base that, you know, has seen a tax increase over the years, despite the fact that we're, you know, we've closed several schools, and we continue to face that in the future. How do you, how do you plan to balance both of that, and what perspective do you bring to that sort of balance?
Well, specifically with the, the Act I index with respect to that, I think that, you know, it's a unique tool that the board possesses, but if we're looking to raise taxes substantially beyond that 2.8% limit, that needs to be looked at under the absolute strictest level of scrutiny, because, you know, as I believe has been mentioned, there are many people in this district that don't want to see their taxes increased. There's many people on fixed incomes. We have a, a large number of students and their families, per the students, on free and reduced lunch, so that needs to be looked at very carefully. With that being said, it's something that the board has at their usage, but I would really want to look at if we could save funds in any other ways before we would raise taxes at a limit such as that.
We have time for maybe one more question.
So, I was gonna ask a different question, but since you mentioned that, so if it came down to looking under every single rock, and obviously, nobody wants to raise taxes, if it meant raising taxes or furloughing teachers, which would you choose?
Well, I, I can't give a blanket yes or no answer. I would obviously need to look at all of the circumstances. Obviously, no one wants to furlough teachers or raise taxes, so I would need to look at it under that specific circumstance. Neither one of those scenarios seems like a great idea to me.
It's not, and that's the kind of tough decisions, you know, that we have to make. And I applaud you as well, as Keith did. I am a little bit concerned about the fact that you are gonna be in college, and I, I don't know that you can really fathom the amount of work that goes into this. I appreciate so much that you're willing to put in the work and put in the time. That would just be my, you know, putting that much on you with having to focus on, on college, you know? Are you sure that's something that you want to, that additional responsibility to take on?
Can I, can I respond to that? Yes. I certainly understand what you're saying. Obviously, this was not a decision I took lightly to run, but I think, as I've explained, if I were to be on the board, I would work with the same level of diligence that I have this year. I've already had experience taking two college courses, and I know what the college atmosphere is like. I know how to budget my time on extremely tight schedules, and I would certainly be willing to assist the board in any way possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnaby.
I have the utmost confidence you'll be able to do that.
If, if, if you would, sir, would you ask Mr. DeLaBerto to come in? Thank you.
Hi, everybody. How you guys doing? All right, I'm kinda happy to be in front of you guys, and tonight, I'd like to speak briefly about a few things. One is my family, the other is my beliefs, and the last is my skill set. Kara and I have lived in the area for over 14 years. We have two kids in the school district, Jack and Cooper. Jack is 13 years old, and he's in Strayer, and Cooper is eight years old, and he goes- Jack is 13 years old, and he's in Strayer, and Cooper is eight years old, and he goes to Richland. Jack's been doing great at Strayer. He's National Junior Honor Society, takes two AP classes, one in math and one in English. And Cooper's doing fantastic in Richland. He gets services for OT, speech, and physical. Our family is really grateful for the experiences that our kids have had, not only in the classroom but out. Yesterday, I volunteered to kinda help out up at Strayer Outdoor School. For you, those of you who don't know what it is, is the seventh graders at Strayer for, it sounds like the last 44 years have been going there, and they do activities, whether it's, part of it is classroom and part of it is team building. And I was really impressed last night with how nice the facility was, how organized it was, and I think this was the first year that they actually had to break it up into two groups just due to the size of the class. But the kids were super engaged, and they really seemed to get along well and enjoy their, their time up there. So as far as my beliefs are concerned, I'm from a large Italian family. I'm the oldest of 12 grandkids. So usually, once or twice a month, we'd all get together at Grandma and Grandpa's house for dinner or a late lunch, and it was great because we'd all be together. It was fun, it was loud, it was a lot of food, and it was like a holiday almost every month. And that's kinda what shaped what my beliefs are as a person. I always think that you should feel good about yourself, you should be proud of what you do, you should surround yourself with, with good people, and try and help out where you can. And that's not only my belief for my family, but also for work. I work for paychecks. I've been there for about 13 years, and what I do is help companies manage their two large expenses, which is labor and benefits. And what it is, it's a lot of listening, getting an understanding of what their current processes are, how they do things, why they do it that way. A lot of times, I'll ask a question of, well, why do you do this process? And the answer sometimes is, well, we've always done it this way. And really, it's, it's my job to understand what better looks like for them and whether or not I can help them. And really, what I do is just give them options and let them know, here's what the opportunities are for that and what the return on investment could be. So like I said in the beginning, I'm very grateful to have our family here in the school district, and I'm looking for ways to give back, and I feel that my beliefs and my skill set would be just a, an addition to the board that could help you guys get to where you wanna be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deliberto. I believe Mr. Akmanowicz has three questions for you.
My first question is, what is your position on organized labor?
As far as?
What is it?
As far as unions or non-unions?
Organized labor, unions.
Yep. No, I think unions are fine. They're put in place to help the, that skill set and make sure that the, they're protected and the contracts are in place to make sure that they're enforced and to help the organization grow.
What is your particular stance on public funds being used for char, being used on charter schools?
I'm kinda walking in blind to that, so that's one of the things I wanna learn about.
And my last question, and I think you already basically answered it. Actually, I won't even ask you that one because you did already answered it. I guess my question is, why did you put in your name? What is your motivation? Not just to help, like, I heard that, but, can you divulge anymore?
Yeah, I mean, last year when we were talking about the changes in the school district, it kinda perked my interest on what was, was going on, and I did speak in front of the board, and really was, it was based on what I had seen in the budget and whether or not, even though the budget as a whole is in place, if there was ways to reduce expenses since revenues are, are flat. And I think there might be opportunities, I don't know, but that's kinda why I wanna just get a better understanding of what's happening with the school district and if there's ways that we can help improve it, whether it be reduction in expenses or just other alternatives that maybe we haven't thought of.
Any other questions?
What would your priorities be if you were appointed? Where do you feel the school needs the most help, I guess, or support, and how would you help with that?
Yeah, I, I think the first step is really just to kinda get a better understanding of the direction of, of the district and what the priorities are. Having two students in the district, you're kind of aware of what's, what's happening on a daily basis just for those two kids. And I know when we've had questions relating to what's going on at school or the safety of the school, Dr. Harner and Mr. Pfeiffer have been real responsive as far as that is concerned, and just trying to get an understanding of, of what's happening and why. Like an example, I know we had talked about last year of, of the impact of having everyone go to Strayer, and it was the right thing to do, but I know from just my personal perspective with Jack, he, he was on the bus, and he participated in JV baseball, and because of the situation with the busing, he had to be, you know, driven to school, and since it was new, there were, you know, things that were kinda juggled as far as the schedule was concerned, and there was 10 days on the schedule, but he only played two. So those kinds of things you hear about from a student perspective, but there's other pieces to it, like the teachers and, and revenue.
Mr. Deliberto, my daughter's also at Outdoor School today.
Oh, good.
Please keep your son away from my daughter.
That's all right. I told him girls are bad news, so we're good.
Same question I've asked everybody else. What was your opinion of the decision to close Milford Middle School and Tohicken Valley Elementary School? And it's, there's no right or wrong answer, just what did you think?
Yeah, I thought the Milford, I didn't understand fully the purpose of the closure, and it seemed rushed to me. I didn't really, and, and looking back on it, I don't know that the dollars that were projected to be saved for Milford were, were realized. And it just seemed for such a big change for the school district. What was the return and what were the options for that? So I guess I would have liked to seen that maybe spread out over the course of a longer period of time to get a better understanding of that. With Tohicken, I'm not as involved with that piece of it, so I don't have a comment on that.
Would anybody else like to ask a question? Mr. McCucci?
Yeah, so, thank you very much and for, for even applying. So, you know, there's, there's a fine balance that we play on the board between schools, teachers, the administration, and balancing that with tax, taxes. And, you know, that, that line, sort of, that, that balance going back and forth. So my question to you is, how do you sort of bridge that gap with your expertise and your knowledge on recognizing that, you know, the money's not endless?
Mm-hmm.
We can't continue to raise taxes, can't spend. So how do you balance all that? How to, what do you bring to the board that helps us?
Yeah, I mean, when, when you have either flat or doing the revenues from the state and rising expenses, and it's, it's gonna become a balancing act, and you just kinda have to figure out where are the dollars best spent? And like I said, just because the budget is what it is, does each department need to get what they got the year before? Is there ways to move money from one department possibly to another? And those are kinda the questions I would ask, is just like, why do you do it this way? Is there an option? What would happen if something changed? And you kinda have to go from there, but, yeah.
Anyone else?
I just have a question about, your demeanor is so calm. How, do you have a story about how you've weathered storms of, you know, being confronted and maybe attacked verbally, and dealing with conflict and confrontation?
Well, you know what, all right, so, all right, so I had cancer six years ago. So it was a humbling experience to see the support and love from my friends, my family, but also from strangers, and it kinda just gave you a different perspective. And I was talking to somebody earlier today who was in a similar situation, and a lot of things, like, people are angry, and they might be fighting a battle that you don't know about, and I tend to let it go, and I don't tend to argue. I'm just trying to get an understanding of, of their perspective, and if it's different than mine, that's okay. You can have your own opinion with that. Not a very emotional person, I won't scream and yell, but I just think it's back to that point of family and togetherness. Like, if, if we're working towards the end goal, it's okay if you and I don't agree on something, but if we understand why you feel that way and why I feel that way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deliberto.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night, everybody. We thank you for your time. Sir, would you do us one favor, Mr. Deliberto? Would you do me one favor and ask the other candidates to please come on and back in? Thank you.
I've been offered forgetting about them out there.
Yeah.
So let me ask a question. Does this, how does this work in terms of, is it like whoever nominates somebody first? We vote on that?
What we're gonna do next is we're gonna take nominations, so, you know, any board member is free to nominate any of the four people.
How do we go, like, how do we vote on who first?
It'll be in the order that they're nominated. So if, you know, if somebody says, I move to nominate Joe Smith.
Yeah.
Then Joe Smith gets voted on first, and the other nominations. We're gonna open it up in a second, once everybody's in.
And then we just vote?
And then we just vote.
And then we just keep going?
Right. Now, just to be clear, if we do not get a resolution, we can have a second round of votes.
Okay.
However, they would need to go through the nomination process again.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So, any other questions about what we're gonna do?
I would suggest you take a roll call vote on this.
Yes, sir. All right, so I'm gonna open the floor for nominations for the open board seat.
I would move to nominate Chris Spear.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Three seconds.
Yes. Any other nominations?
I thought you were gonna vote on him first and then take later nomination?
We were gonna take the nominations and list them in the order that they were taken and then go back and vote.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I would like to nominate Leo.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Seems like we should, I think we should, like, vote first on who we nominate, and then, I like your suggestion.
We'll get a chance to vote on everybody once they're nominated and in the order that they're nominated, so. Mr. Spear will be voted on first, followed by Mr. Barnaby.
Right, but we may wanna nominate, maybe not now, but down the road after we vote on those.
We're, we're still open for nominations. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Rob Deliberto.
I'll second that.
Well, I don't want Dell to feel left out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, go ahead, nominate Dell, James. I'll nominate him. Can I nominate two?
Absolutely.
I'll nominate Dell.
I'll second.
Yeah, it's a little formal. Alrighty, we're gonna first take a vote on Mr. Chris Spear.
It's five.
Correct. We need five votes to gain approval. So, Madam Secretary, would you do the honors, please?
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Kern?
He has great heart, but no.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
President Klein?
No.
Four to three.
So the motion fails. Okay, next up is Mr. Barnaby.
Ms. Weed?
Reluctantly, no.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
I'm gonna go with no.
Ms. Mitchell?
I admire you, but I have to say no. I'm sorry, buddy.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
No.
President Klein?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Right, four to three.
Okay, next up is Mr. Deliberto.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell? Ms. Weed?
I'm on the fence, but I'm gonna say yes.
President Klein?
No.
All right, it appears.
He has five.
It appears that Mr. Deliberto has won. Madam Secretary, would you please swear in Mr. Deliberto?
Now you've gone and done it.
That's why she makes the big glass. Oh, quickly, thanks. Make it a fancy stamp, too.
[inaudible]. And Richard [inaudible].
I, Robert Deliberto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
But I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution. Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will support the duties of my office with my [inaudible].
The duties of my office with my [inaudible].
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Deliberto, congratulations. Okay, this brings us to the first general public comment section of the meeting. Madam Secretary, did we have anybody that signed up for public comment?
No, we did not.
No? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Yes, ma'am. Please address the podium and state your area of residence.
My name's Emily Swan, and I live in the borough. I just wanted to take an opportunity, I recognize that you have great challenges with the budget, but I wanted to speak on behalf of the music department. I think that it adds a huge value to our children's education beyond just learning notes and learning the ability to play an instrument or to sing in front of somebody. It's been shown, and I know, Dr. Harner, you shared information, that our students in the music program, on average, have a one-point GPA higher level than in the music program, on average, have a one-point GPA higher level than their peers. And I'm very concerned about the potential loss of another staff member for the music department. Over the past 12 years, there's been a 35, that would be a 35% loss in the staffing, from 17 down to 11. And from my own work, I know that when we lose staff, it is not, you're not able to maintain the quality of what you're doing. At an elementary level, less opportunity to have individual training, contact with your teacher, a music teacher for instruments and all that, means that kids don't have the ability to build those skills and they don't get to have that experience of excitement. You know how long it takes to learn how to play a single note on an instrument? To get to the point where you can actually play something that's meaningful, that inspires the child to stay in that program, you need the time, you need the commitment. And I know, I have a child currently in the high school, he is a freshman. I have a child who is currently in Strayer, who was redistricted to Milford and then redistricted to Strayer. So I know, I've been part of the experience of all the shuffles that have occurred, but I just beg you to, you know, do what you can to maintain the quality of the music program. I see the work that all of the teachers are doing, all of the hours beyond what would be the end of a typical person's workday. Mr. Parker, Mr. Santinello, they're amazing, but I fear about losing people of high quality like them because of burnout. I also fear that, you know, our program will suffer because kids will drop out of the program, because they will give up on instruments, because they don't get to play a real piece of music. And they don't get that contact with their teachers. Six times, one time lesson every six days, you know, sometimes there's two weeks in between lessons. And as a parent, trying to motivate your kid and keep them involved in that is, it's very challenging. I know Mr. James spoke about the impact of music beyond, like, you know, the musical, beyond, you know, the face value. And I, and I agree with it 1,000%, 1,000%. I just think it's, I can't put it into words. And I, and I think, oh, I do wanna also point out two other things, they're important points. One, you talk about the charter schools and the impact of potentially losing students to charter schools because our arts programs don't stand up to charter schools in the area. And I'm concerned about that and that impact on the tax base. And also, the importance of music in education, because not only is it something that gives them a skill for their entire life, somebody plays a sport, when they're 20, they, you know, 30, they may blow out their knee, but they can't do it anymore. But you play an instrument, you sing a song, you can do that until you're 80, 90. And I know people who do. It's also so important to kids to have an outlet for their stress. And singing and playing an instrument is such, it's been shown to reduce stress levels, it's been shown to impact people positively, their depression, anxiety.
Miss Swan, can you please wrap up? Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay.
But I thank you for hearing my
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Harner?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Dr. Harner.
Do we need to stand up a minute and wake up? Okay, good to see, good to see you all tonight. We have two items on the agenda tonight for the superintendent report, and they're celebrations. The first is our high school students who are Students of the Month. Mr. Magnitsch, the assistant principal at the high school, would you please come on up and talk about your program and bring the students forward?
I wanna start off by thanking Leo, did a really nice job tonight representing our school, real proud of you. I'm sure you're gonna do great things in their future.
Leo for president.
Yes.
Student of the Month. When I came on board four years ago, we nominated one student every month. And I walk the halls and I see some great things happening, talk to teachers, and I thought, we have to do more, we have to get more involved. So, decided to have every grade. So now, starting four years ago, actually three, is when we started the program of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors being represented. And it was all done through teachers, faculty, members in our school, recognizing students for not only great attendance, great academics, socially, in the community, extracurricular, working, everything. So it was a whole package. And again, we got some great nominees throughout these last couple of years. What we do after we get, I'm sorry, a Student of the Month, we nominate an outstanding Student of the Month. So tonight, you're gonna see two of those outstanding students. The Rotary Club through Quakertown sponsors a dinner the second Tuesday of every month. And I'm fortunate enough to go to that with the parents and those individuals who are considered Outstanding Student of the Month. They're awarded not only the dinner, but also $100 scholarship to use for their future education. So, it's a great event. You're gonna see two great students come up tonight. It's kinda like the bookends, we have a freshman for the month of February, and then the month of April, we have a senior. So you're gonna, you're gonna see both ends of it. So I'm gonna call up my first individual, and I'll say a little bit, but I'd really like to turn it over to the board or the community if they wanna ask any questions of these great individuals. So Caleb Roth, if you could come up, please, he is a freshman. Caleb does a great job, a little similar to myself, has an interest in the country and livestock. He actually wants to go on to possibly Penn State and be a farm manager. He does great academically, also a very blue collar. He worked for the Field of Dreams in Milford. He takes many honors courses, engineering courses as well. He participates not only in extracurricular, but he's also a member of the basketball and soccer team. Again, just the teachers, their comments are always the same, it's the students that go above and beyond. They help those students that need help, they're there all the time, they do extra things inside school, outside of school. So Caleb is a perfect example of that, and being only a freshman, not, not, not very often do you see the outstanding student being a ninth grader. So, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Caleb in front of you all, and if you have any questions, that's our Outstanding Student of the Month, right there.
Questions? Three questions, Mr. Rock.
Three questions.
I'll spare him.
Thank you.
I'll ask a question. I'll take you up, and I ask the same question of every student I get a chance to come across, especially people at the high school. Can you find a place to have lunch?
I have, the first couple of weeks, I sat wherever I could find a seat, but luckily with the soccer team, they had its spot open and they invited me to sit with them, and that's where I sit all, every day now, so.
There you go.
That's a tough question.
That is a tough question.
Mr. Roth, what's the best thing you like about the school?
I like, the quick, the soccer team really invited me in, 'cause I came in, my eighth grade year, I was new. And I didn't know anyone, I went upper perk before, and soccer was the thing I did. So, being with them, the guys on the team that were there became my friends, I'm still with them today. So, they were really inviting to me, and I never, the first day, I had people talking to me, inviting me to their lunch table, so it really, it felt welcoming to me.
Awesome. Any major plans for the summer?
I plan on, I have soccer camps that I'm in. I'm raising two market goats right now, so I'm over at the farm every day, I'm bolling tiering at a farm also, and trying to find different jobs I can do around.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our next individual is not here with us tonight, and that is Amy Nguyen. She is a sophomore, and she is currently at the Pops Concert. She does band and also choir. Again, just an excellent student, she participates in our peer counseling that goes over to QE. She also participates in our PBIS leadership program. Again, excellent grades, has all honors courses, goes above and beyond, just a really good student. So she's not here this evening, but I will accept that certificate for her and take it in tomorrow. Our next student is a senior for the month of April, and that's Ronnie Best. If you could come up, please. Ronnie's one of those individuals that tries to get involved in everything, and she's a part of the key club, and also our event coordinator for the mini-thon. If you're familiar with our mini-thon, she was the, pretty much the heart and soul of the whole mini-thon this year. It's a 12-hour program that we put on to help pediatric cancer. It's through the whole school district, the community. Ronnie putting countless hours, her and Dr. Finerty, and just did a great, a great deal, I believe took over 14,000 this year, 14, almost 15 grand this year. And it was, I think, at least four or 5,000 more than it was the year before. So each year, it gets a little better, and she just does a great job. She was also involved with our basketball team for the last four years, so she's a very good basketball player. And also, environmental club, and this year, they took second place out of 15 schools in the Bucks County Environmental at Delevaux University. Her GPA is a 4.18. She's part of our National Honor Society. She takes four AP courses. And she plans on going to Shippensburg University, biomedical engineer, and has her eye on Merck Pharmaceutical. So, there's another outstanding student.
Ms. Best, I'd like to first thank you for your work with the mini-thon. I think that is an awesome, awesome thing that you do and the time that you give. One question about that, did Dr. Harner happen to show up and bust any dance moves during mini-thon?
Yeah, I don't think this year, and I was super busy, so I wouldn't really know.
Okay.
I know Dr. Harner did.
Or was it, you were just doing this if he did?
Maybe that, too.
Okay. And Shippensburg's a wonderful school, so good luck there.
Thank you.
She was my partner drawing the pepper alley.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah.
Any major summer plans?
Um, just work, trying to save up for college, that's really it.
Your work?
At Giant Food Stores next to Lowe's, I'm customer service.
What draws you to the pharmaceutical industry?
I just like how you can expand on basically anything, that there is a lot of possibilities that you can do, especially with biomedical and thinking of new advances to try to make the human body better.
I happen to have a very good connection to Merck. I happen to be married to him, so you let me know in a few years, okay?
Congratulations, Student of the Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job. Great, thank you, sir. I am. He runs a lab there. That's what he does. He can take his job. He's a father. 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 Her friends at Nidek will miss her more than words can say, but we're excited for her to begin this next phase in her life. She has provided so much value to every single person in the Nidek community and her presence will be missed more than words can say. Mrs. Hippolyte, your love for children put Nidek on a winning streak that will live forever. Thank you for your unending passion for children. And that's from Scott. Thank you very much. Antonio Cordo, come on down. This is from Mr. Finerty, then I'll add in my PS, if I may, sir. Tony Cordo taught algebra for a long time in Quakertown. He was among the original clan of teachers at the freshman center faculty and taught there through its transition into the, after it became the sixth grade center. Tony was a very dedicated teacher. He's always among the first to arrive every morning and frequently stayed after school tutoring, tutoring his students. I will say that I've, I've been around the high school a lot more than the other schools because it seems to be a lot more daily action and things that, that needs the superintendent my attention. But I've seen, seen Tony teach in and out for, for almost, over four years. I will tell you, his heart and soul's in it. I could hear him with that very deep voice of his, all the way out in the front door. Do you remember that voice? You want to take, you, you want to, you want to come up and? With his very deep voice, you could walk in the freshman center, you can hear him at the other end of the building. But I would tell you, it's from his passion, not from any kind of other thing, but love for what he does. And I would tell you that I saw him come in here over the summertime with his, his partner in crime and teaching math, Chris Hunter, and giving his personal time to the school district and to his students. Just this past year, Tony took on a student that I asked him personally to take on, that was a sixth grade student who, parents wanted him to be placed in Algebra I and he was qualified to do so. I asked Tony if he would teach him first period of the day and then the student would go down to, to the sixth grade center for the rest of the day and have a second math with Kathy Anderson. Tony took it on without a question. I'm grateful and for your leadership in the classroom and all that, so thank you, Tony. Bev Pearson from PAF. Bev, didn't make it. But I'll read what Eric has had to say. Bev served as a special education instructional aide at, at PAF and Richland Elementary School. She had an uncanny ability to make connections and build positive relationships with some of the most challenging students. The PAF community has missed Bev's assertiveness and willingness to support any student at any time that she could. And I would tell you that we have a lot of students with a lot of needs here in the community. And every student requires the best and, and out of PAF they give the best and I'm very grateful for Bev's attention to those students. Diane Goldrick, fourth grade at Richland. Congratulations. From her principal Nicole Zerblis, Diane Goldrick has, or, excuse me, Goldrick, has devoted over 30 years to inspiring students. Every day she shares her passions, especially in reading and music. Diane is a leader at Richland School and her creative spirit will forever leave a mark on her students and the Richland Elementary School staff. So thank you very much. John, would you come on up? John Flynn. John Flynn is a PE teacher, has taught in almost ever, every elementary school. He currently is serving in Quakertown Elementary and PAF Elementary as their physical education teacher. His calm and even keeled demeanor coupled with an amazing sense of humor allows for an excellent presence for our students. And I will tell you, every time I see him, he's very gracious and always has a big smile. And most recently I saw him out there playing ball in the court inside the gym at PAF and he had them going. He mentors students through his modeling of an active lifestyle and his leadership by example. He has been responsible for PE for thousands of Quakertown students. Think about that, thousands of students. And has been the coordinator for field days for, for many years. In addition, Mr. Flynn has been responsible for leadership of the ACEs program, all children, children exercise simultaneously as an event and method to motivate all children to exercise. Mr. Flynn has been a constant in gymnasiums across Quakertown for decades. And we wish him the very best as he turns the page to a new chapter. Best of luck. Beth Allen, come on down. Beth is a learning support teacher at Nidek Elementary School. From Mr. Gutschall, she, Beth is a true professional and does whatever it takes to help her students and colleagues. As a teacher of students with special needs, she knows students demonstrate growth and leadership in many ways. Best passions for what is right and what will help her children put Nidek in a better place, she always does. Her friends are happy, her friends are happy for her and will miss her deeply. Thank you for your passionate work, Ms. Allen. Now, is that your husband out there?
It is.
Now, did you tell your husband that I offered you that we could rescind your retirement? Did you tell him that?
Yeah, he said do it.
Well, we'll have to discuss that part. Well, congratulations, Bev. Beth. Now, the next gentleman is the character from Strayer, now at PAF Elementary School, Mr. Marty Freer. Marty, please come on up. This is from Mr. Thompson, and I'll add a little bit at the end. Marty taught in Quakertown for more than 33 years at Richland, Strayer, and PAF. Marty taught fifth grade for so long at Richland that five years after he left, Mrs. Elmore was still using his room to, to provide directions. Walked down the hallway, turned left at Mr. Freel's old room, et cetera. He leaves an indelible mark on children and on his friends and colleagues. The Quakertown Community School District community will truly miss Mr. Freel's sense of humor, commitment to children, passion for excellence, and his own words, awesomeness. When I met, first met Marty, it was at Strayer and he was out there in the hallway during a class change and students that weren't going into his classroom were coming by and Marty was up there hi-fi-ing them all. And that speaks volumes of what the impact you've had on children that I personally got to see, so thank you. You'll be missed. The next is the voice of Quakertown Community School District, Linda Grisella. Linda, come on up. If you ever call in here and you get beyond the voice of my Alice Bishop, you'll, Linda answers the phone and sits out here at the front desk for, for a very long time. Linda's been with the district for 30 years. She began her career with Quakertown Community School District in May of 1988 in the computer room at the old district office when each building had just one computer with a dial-up modem. During her, what's that? During her time with Quakertown Community School District, she also worked in the tax and census office and as the district receptionist, most recently. Linda's kind and welcoming presence in the district office will be missed. I will tell you, I've never had anyone call in and say they were not properly addressed when they called into the school district office or greeted out here in front, which is, and it's been for almost five years, so thank you. We congratulate her on her new beginning and next adventure, and I know the grandbabies are out in the state of Oregon, so she'll be spending a lot of time out there in the near future. Congratulations. We have several other teachers that aren't here, but I will, I think everyone else is, is there anyone I failed to pull, call out? I think I've called out everybody. But thank you very much for your service. Look, look forward to seeing you out there in the community. Beth, you said you wanted me to find you a job. Sir, we'll just have to negotiate the price. Congratulations.
Dr. Harner, as an addendum to your student of the month, I missed my cue there before you segued into the congratulations segment. I just want to add that Eric Peg in Trinidad, he's student of the month at Tech School. And I just thought that that might be a nice addendum to that section of the minutes.
Well, thank you, and we'll bring him on in to meet you.
All right, Dr. Harner, is, is that it for your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That brings us to the student representative report. Mr. Barnaby?
Well, not much new tonight. The conclusion of our school year, most clubs and activities, at least at the high school, are coming to a conclusion. As Dr. Harner mentioned, track and field sent five student athletes to the state competition, including Hudson, so we'll certainly be excited to see those results. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Parker and our high school jazz band who won first place at the Steel Stacks Jazz Showcase, which is absolutely renowned as a very highly competitive jazz competition. In other news, our high school's key club is still continuing their outreach. They are collecting shoes for poor families in developing nations. And finally, our senior class is closer to the end of their academic career, at least in Quakertown. Final exams begin tomorrow morning. Senior prom is this Saturday at Sunny Book Brawl Room in Pottstown. Many will be leaving on May 30th for a trip to Walt Disney World. And commencement, as you all know, is set for June 7th. Thank you.
Mr. Barnaby, I have a question. Now that your Thursday nights and Friday nights will be free, are you going to change your schedule?
We'll see.
A resounding maybe, right? Okay, thank you.
Sir, I have a proclamation.
Yes, sir.
If you have this read into record for Mr. Barnaby.
Surely. Okay. Whereas Leo Barnaby has served as student representative on the Board of School Directors of the Quakertown Community School District during the 2017-2018 school year, and whereas the Board of School Directors commends Leo Barnaby for doing an outstanding job of keeping the Board informed of student achievements and activities and for fulfilling all of his responsibilities as an elected student representative to the Board of School Directors, therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors directs the secretary to include this proclamation in the minutes of the board meeting on this, the 24th day of May AD 2018, and be it further resolved to extend to Leo Barnaby best wishes for continued success in future endeavors and to forward a copy of this proclamation to him as a lasting reminder of the Board's appreciation for a job well done. All right, this brings us to our standing committee reports. First up is the policy committee report. Ms. Weed.
Everyone is always riveted by the policy committee. Tonight's meeting was canceled, but we do have one policy on the agenda for tonight for approval. It's policy 806 on child abuse. The law recently changed to require child abuse clearances every five years instead every three years. And we're cross-referencing a section called delegation of responsibility. The first reading was done in April, second reading, and board approval will be at this meeting. And that was the only change made, was to change it from five years to three years.
Thank you. Next will be the finance committee meeting report, and this was Dr. Sedikum's committee. Obviously, Dr. Sedikum has resigned, so Ms. Mitchell will be giving the report tonight. However, I do want to announce that Mr. Keith McCucci is going to be taking over as the finance committee chair effective immediately. Congratulations, Mr. McCucci. He, however, wimped out, and so Ms. Mitchell will be giving the report tonight.
Oh, no, I thought, I thought Keith was doing it. Keith?
I walked in late.
Wait, what?
Exactly. Oh, you weren't there. I nominated you.
How much do you recollect?
I had to. Okay. Finance committee meeting tonight. We applied for a couple of mini grants and Pennsylvania Department of Education Division of Food and Nutrition has awarded Quakertown and Richland Elementary School each $4,800 as recipients of the school breakfast program. So that is exciting. Tonight we will be voting to approve Dewey Engineering as a construction manager for the Nidek School renovation and addition project. We revisited the student accident and voluntary insurance renewal. We also discussed, one thing that stands out to me is recommending travel abroad insurance, which apparently we have, we don't have and we haven't had in the past. It's a minimal $2,500 policy per year. But aside from that, we, we also have a live risk renewal proposal as well as a student accident insurance proposal, so that is, there's some information in your, in the board docs for that. Let's see. The next item was the technology lease. The 2018-19 technology lease will provide a refresh of the elementary school technology equipment, and that's going to include 700 second-generation iPads that no longer support the iOS versions and many apps are updated and then these devices are about six or seven years old. And the lease will also support the replacement of elementary school audiovisual equipment in the classroom. And the elementary schools have a variety of projectors and interactive technology that are aging and failing, and so we're going to go ahead and replace those. This is a four-year lease. It's been a longstanding practice of ours that each year one is paid off and a new one is entered into. And so that's about, the four-year taxable lease totaling $500,000 would be $125,000 annually with a dollar buyout, so we do buy those out at the end. And we hope to recoup at least somewhat of the, the cost of the 700 second-generation iPads. We're hoping to get around $25,000 to $30,000 for the sale of those. Next item was a surplus of property and the disposal process for that. So within a lot of our facilities, sometimes we have unwanted, obsolete, or non-functioning materials to manage. For instance, with the closing of Milford Middle School last year and Tewikin Valley this year, we want to implement a surplus property management disposal process. And so we're going to move forward to implement that. And in that case, we would put items up for sale, for one week, and then for a second week, if we feel it's possible to unload those items, and after two weeks, we would just find a way to donate or properly dispose of those items. Next item was our Moody score, and Moody assigned us as a district. How do you say, is it? It's not AAA? Double A3, thank you. Okay, I was hoping that, I wasn't going to say that wrong. Which is a good rating. And we also applied for a municipal bond credit, or, excuse me, we were issued a $9.75 million general obligation bond. Let's see, what else? Oh, the capital projects, that's the last item, I believe, that, aside from the, the final budget. So we mentioned last meeting that we wanted to get a priorities list of all the items that we needed to, to make sure to prioritize within the capital projects. One thing to be reminding you all of is tonight that we're going to be voting on the, the Trump-Bowersville Elementary roof. We also looked at the budget holistically, which, just to remind everyone, we are going to be voting on the budget June 1st. And I would just really recommend everyone on the boards, since that's such a critical vote, to go back and take a look at some of the documents that are on board docs. There's three different options, obviously, the 2.8% tax increase, 3.5% tax increase, and 4.2% respectively. And, and so just to give you an idea, at a 2.8% tax increase, we'd be looking at a shortfall of 2 million, 3.5, we'd be looking at a shortfall of 1.6 million, and 4.2, we'd be looking at a shortfall of 1.1 million. Now, some good news is that it appears that we are going to become under budget this year, approximately $4 million, which would bring our fund balance to a total of approximately $15 million, which I thought was a good amount of money, but I later found in our meeting that one of the risks of our credit rating was that we don't have as much padding in the, the fund balance as, so we don't know, and what we're trying to get is, what is that exact sweet spot that we should have in order to maintain a good credit rating? But we also don't want to hoard taxpayer dollars. So we're really trying to figure out, you know, where is that? So more to come on that, but, but we're, we're, some other things to take into consideration if you look on board docs. There's, at the bottom, it says additional considerations. So some of the things that we're considering, removing from this budget that are accounted within the numbers are the Milford Middle School demolition, removing the senior high school AP position, the board newsletter, and then transportation cost. So that all added together is a pretty significant. So that all added together is a pretty significant amount of money. It's about $1 million, I'd say, give or take. So that being said, just keep in mind that the budget that's approved, another thing that's significant is that I didn't realize, you're not, you're only allowed to touch the, you have to plan to take money out of the fund balance. Mid-year, you can't just decide, oh, I'm going to take money out of the fund balance, which I thought was rather strange, because it seems like that would be a savings account, and you could just say, okay, I'm going to take this from my savings account. But you, the only, and Zach, please correct me if I'm wrong with any of this, this is my understanding, is that you have to plan that budget in advance to say how much money you're going to take out of the fund balance for the next year. That's the only time that you can plan to take money out of the balance. Am I tracking on that?
More or less, yes.
More or less, okay. And there's maybe some exceptions to that, right? Just like some small exceptions to that, but...
This bill's in a little reserve cushion, and we try not to use it available.
Yeah, there's a small amount we have as a cushion. It's about $800,000, but that's, that's it.
So for the record, we need to earmark money in our budget that we're probably not going to use. Hopefully.
Well, if you look at the averages...
We have to say we might use it, right?
If you look at the averages over the last seven years, we've come under budget approximately 2.2, and then in the last three years, we've come under 1.3. Is it, wait a minute, am I saying that correctly?
I'm just going to, trying to say, I understand that, but just for clarification, we're saying that we may need to borrow money later in the year, so we have to include it in our budget for next year, even if we're not going to borrow it. If we may need to, we just need to earmark it now that it may be borrowed, or used, rather, excuse me.
Used, we, it's not borrowed.
It's not borrowing, it's our money that's in the bank.
Yeah.
But it's not the revenues that we have coming in from the feds, from the state, and from local property taxes, grants, and everything else, it's...
It's from our savings account, per se. Yes, sir, thank you. Right.
Yeah, so, so June 1st is the vote, right?
Uh, June 14th.
14th, sorry. June 14th is the vote for the final budget, and so I just want everyone to, this is probably one of the most important decisions that you're going to make as a Board member this year, so I would just ask, even if you're not a numbers person, to really at least look over the summaries that are provided, and decide, you know, philosophically, where you're going to vote, if it's going to be to hold the line at the, at the 2.8, which would leave us $2 million, or to maybe have some wiggle room to take some exceptions. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. DeLiberto, you've got a lot of homework to do in two weeks.
Sounds likely.
Did anybody have anything else to add?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Next is the Bucks County Intermediate Union Number, intermediate unit number 22, Mr. Jackson.
The IU met by phone last Monday, scheduled to meet on Tuesday, that being Election Day, a lot of people decided that they would rather attend that than attend our meeting, so we moved it to phone meeting on Monday. I've included everything from the Awesome News, which is a highlight of all the different programs that they wish to highlight, and the Board Digest, which highlights all the various things that were approved at that meeting. If you get a chance to go through the Awesome News, you'll see our own Lisa Hoffman on page 11, looks like she's scooping ice cream or something, is that what it was, water ice? Yes, very exciting. And that's, please take a moment to look at those programs, it's a lot easier for you to look at them, for me to summarize them all. It's public record, too, so if the public has an interest, they can review that as well. That's my IU report.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And just to be clear and for the record, are you saying that at the last meeting, you phoned it in?
We did.
Okay. All right, sir. Next is the Legislative Report, again, Mr. Jackson.
Legislative Report, I would ask again of the public, I know Ms. Mitchell several times has said she wished that the public could have access to information about all the various things Harrisburg and the feds are dealing with that is going to affect our schools, so I took it upon myself to include the Legislative Report that we get from the IU every time, there's an IUBD every month, we have a representative there who highlights all of the things that Harrisburg is doing. I've asked Alice to put that on the public portion of the website, so every second meeting of the month, if people in the public have any concern about what legislation Harrisburg is considering that's going to affect the schools, please look at that, and depending by how you feel, contact your legislatures. I'm going to highlight a couple things from that report today. There have been a number of House bills that were passed to assist educational measures aimed at high school to career paths and vocational training, which is good, because I know that we like to highlight the Vo-Tech School here, because it's doing a magnificent job for those students who are either, didn't have any plans on going to college, but want to enter the workforce right away, but also those people who were planning on going to colleges and suddenly realizing it's no longer affordable, and you can come out of high school earning a nice $60,000 job or whatever, and not have $100,000 loans over your head for the next, you know, 50 years, so. That's a good thing that Harrisburg is starting to push that as a proud tradition of going to work instead of going to college sometimes. House Bill 638 prohibiting school board candidates from cross-filing was approved by the House and is now in Senate Committee. Rumor is that will likely pass. Certainly a long way away, but for those of us who have cross-filled over the years, there's a good chance that'll cease. Senate Bill 1048, attempting to remove school buildings as polling places was referred to committee. That has little support, as I understand it. I certainly know, for those people who are not happy that we have polling places in our schools, this Board attempted to change that. We went before the county commissioners last year with four willing alternate locations to house polling places outside of our schools, and the county commissioners basically said they would die on a hill before they let the schools, you know, no longer serve as that function, so. This has little support in Harrisburg, it's got little support locally. I love the idea, it certainly is, but parents, I'm sure, would love to have those two days still, you know, still available, but that's one where you've got to contact some people.
I, if I may, on this point, Ms. Edwards, the next calendar year and the general election in November, that is a staff development day?
It's a, it's a trade day for student conferences, so there would not be students in school.
Nor teachers.
Nor staff.
Nor staff.
Unless the staff elected to actually hold conferences on that date, which normally they don't.
In the springtime, that's a snow makeup day?
I would have to look to see if we approved it, or if we took that out as a snow makeup day.
I would, moving forward, given the feedback we've had from some of our parents and the challenges some of our principals had, and trying to make it work, that we don't, going forward, that's not a workday for students, and maybe an alternate day for staff development or something.
I think just from a safety standpoint, sir, I think that's a good idea.
Any, any concerns? Then we'll make sure we modify, and if we have to bring back to you the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Property tax reform, that's one that's high on everybody's list of concern. There are a number of bills spinning around Harrisburg. The latest one, the one that's being kicked around now, Senate Bill 1137, this would exempt property taxes from your primary residence. That would be the only property that would be exempt from taxes. To offset that revenue, there's a proposed increase in the state income taxes, and municipalities would have the option to increase their own local taxes as well. So that's just one of many options that's being kicked around. Nothing is hard and fast, but the likelihood is something will pass in the next couple of years. Senate Bill 2 is the voucher program. It is creating a voucher program for students who find themselves in the lowest 15% of performing high schools. They can set up a voucher account, like a 529-style account, and taxpayer money would be put into that, so they could choose to go to any other charter or even a private school. It was something that this Board voted against, sent a resolution to Harrisburg saying as much. I know that most of the schools in the state have similarly acted. It stopped for a while, but it's getting kicked around again as a possibility. I'll leave you guys to the politics to see what you think about that. The last thing I have is PlanCon. I sent out a committee report to the members of the Facilities Committee this afternoon and to the administration. There was a subcommittee out in Harrisburg analyzed the PlanCon program to see if it's worth continuing. There's definitely a willingness to continue the program to help fund school, school buildings, renovations and such. The problem is, I'm not sure where the money's going to come from, so they say, yes, we desperately need to do this, but we don't know how to pay for it. So those are the ones I've highlighted. There's a lot of other information about what's going on in Harrisburg, if you care to look, but that's my report.
Thank you. And for those of you that still actually get a newspaper, if you get the Philadelphia Inquirer, there is an article about the PlanCon above the fold today on the front page, and it's getting a lot of traction right now because of some of the schools in Philadelphia that still have asbestos in it, lead paint, and so forth. They're looking for funds to be able to fix those buildings, but there's also a lot of other school districts like us that have had recent construction projects. So there is apparently, as Mr. Jackson indicated, kind of a renewed effort to try to expand that program, but again, they don't know where the money's coming from. Ultimately, you know it's going to come from us, but anyway.
Quick question. Senator Minch and Representative Stats, my understanding, they both support charter schools?
I'll not speak to them specifically on that point, but I will say Senator Minch, on SB 2, the voucher program, he was an original supporter of that bill. However, after hearing from his constituents, he removed his support for a bill that he himself put forward, or co-sponsored. He is no longer supporting that bill, the last I heard.
Okay, great.
And Craig, are you familiar with Craig?
Craig, I'm pretty sure is...
I can't speak to Craig. I haven't spoken to him directly on this exact bill.
I know, Dr. Harner, you've said in the past that you all and Paul went to his office to talk to him about that specifically, right? Am I wrong?
We briefed Mr. Representative Stats about two years ago on the cost to his constituents for charters, cyber charter schools, talking about their fund balance, which is exorbitant in the 40% or more category and all that, to get his support, but I don't, I'm not sure what his most recent votes have been. The SB 2 has not been before the House, so that's where we have to have the conversations.
So I would just recommend to community members, you know, if you, at the least, just to communicate to your representative senators how you feel about the matter. You know, my issue with charter schools, I feel like they have a place, for sure, that in certain cases. However, if you look at just the situation that occurred in Philadelphia, there was a charter school organization that was found to not be held accountable in the same ways that the public education system is, and that, that's truly my issue in a lot of cases with charter schools. And so if you want to have a voice, contact your representatives, let them know how you feel on that.
If I may add, Ms. Mitchell, on that, when, we have about $1.6 million leaving our bank account, to talk about the bank account, going off to cyber charter schools to support the students, the public school students that reside in Quakertown Community School District boundaries. $1.6 million, just for cyber. 25%, Lynn, you still, Lynn Rousen?
She's at her daughter's concert.
At the daughter's concert tonight. Ah, rats, she's the one that did the research for me. I believe about 25% of the students who leave us to go to cyber charter schools that are regular ed students end up being special ed students. So when you, when a student decides, this is for the good of our new Board member, a new Board member, and I review for other, the more senior members, that about $13,500 goes off, our base student cost in Quakertown for a student, goes off for a regular ed student to a charter school. If the student has a disability, then it's the average special needs student cost, which is about $25,000. Add up all the costs to our special education program, divide by the number of students who are in the program, which is about 800 and some? Janet, about 800 students in your program?
Nine hundred.
Closer to 900, and it's about $25,000 per student, so that's what goes off. So when they leave us, they get, they all of a sudden have a disability, and the price has doubled.
So that's essentially taking the tax dollars that we would have spent on them here and letting it follow the kid to some other school.
Well, yes, for the 13, for the 25, in my personal opinion, to rack it.
But it goes up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I get that, that you're calling a little bit of fraud in the, in the game. Yeah, I mean, the voucher thing, to me, it's, it's more of the money on the kid's back. Who knows what, what will really happen if they allow that to go through? In terms of our district, because we're high-performing for the most part, we're not in the 15%, right? Isn't that...
I mean, the big, the big problem with the SB, if you consider what the purpose of a charter school, in my humble opinion, it was to help children in those really bad-off schools have an option, okay? And that's what this bill purports to do. If they're in a really bad school, let's give them money, it takes it from the really bad school and gives it to the kids, and says, go find yourself a better school. Well, that's a great idea in theory, the problem is, there's no mechanism to end that, should the child leave, or should the school suddenly become better? So in other words, once that money, that funnel from that school is going to that kid, it never stops, regardless of if the kid moves away, or if the district approves. And that's the issue that we had when we voted not to support the bill.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Upper Bucks County Technical School Report, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Upper Bucks County Technical School Report. I'm happy to report for a second month in a row, the Upper Bucks County Technical School Student of the Month was selected from Quakertown for the month of May. Eric Pagan Trinidad, who has enrolled in our machining program, gets to have the great honor. Eric is already working part-time and has been accepted to Penn College of Technology, where he's intending to pursue a four-year degree in manufacturing engineering, and so what I'm pointing that out is that he's going to a school after tech school, and I think that's absolutely phenomenal. Goes to show you how versatile our tech schools can be. Because of the Upper Bucks County Technical School, he will be going into the next phase of his education, actually with 12 college credits under his belt. Just to touch on last month, Jordan Myers. Jordan Myers was our Student of the Month in April. I want to mention a few of her achievements, because she, you know, I didn't speak about her very much last month. Not only has Jordan scored the highest NOCTI score in her class, she has perfect attendance, first honors, she's class treasurer, and she also placed first in her basic healthcare skills test. I'm glad to say that she will be continuing in a career of care for others. Best of luck and success in your career in nursing in the fall, Jordan, who is not here, obviously. But my best. Dr. Harner will begin effective July 1st, 2018, to begin his role as Superintendent of Record of the Upper Bucks County Technical School. His tenure will continue until June of 2020. Congratulations, Dr. Harner.
Thank you, sir. Looking forward to it.
Upper Bucks County Technical Center donation report for May was fairly impressive. Came in at around $12,853 notable donations. Came from some Quakertown businesses like Demco Automation, who's contributed about another $1,500 this month. And I, honorable mention to Kiesel Dental this month. Kiesel Dental, last month, held a race, what was it, outrun DK race, and they raised $7,103 for, for the tech school dental program, and we're very grateful for that. We're hoping that they're going to do it again for us next year. No pressure. Personal contribution in the form of two student awards for $500 each was awarded to an animal technology student, as well as a landscape technology and plant technology student. That was care of a Mr. Penrose Halliwell, who lives in Pen Ridge, who's another one of our ascending districts. He's also a past Board member. Mr. John Jeffrey Swita, the new Upper Bucks County Technical School Executive Director, was approved to be the final write-the-know-off... Director, was approved to be the final right-to-know officer, to be the official right-to-know officer. Uh, there are no subcommittee reports from Facilities, Finance, or Policy. Uh, however, um, I do have some brief mention here. The Funding Formula Ad Hoc Committee met after our last JOC meeting. In this meeting, attendance wa- in attendance was President Klein, Dr. Anderson, and I. Much discussion was conducted on the merit of possible alternative funding methods for the tech school. However, it should be said that this is definitely a procedural exercise. It is required that we revisit this occasionally and review it. Is widely agreed that any changes that may occur should be gradual and calculated. There is no anticipated decision on if the model needs to be changed at all. Therefore, at this time, there is no deadline or imminent urgency to make any changes, though we will continue to review it and look at alternate options, uh, to see if there's a more clever or equitable funding formula that we can come up with. Uh, I was voted to continue on as treasurer for the 2018-2019 school year. And some final dates to note, uh, June fourth, uh, the senior ceremony will be done at Penridge at seven o'clock for the tech school. Uh, the next Joint Operating Committee meeting is June fourteenth, and July is a bye month for us. There's no meeting. June second, hazardous waste pickup at the tech school property, sponsored by the County of Bucks County, no electronics. June fourteenth, from five to seven, the Upper Bucks County Technical School will be hosting a business card exchange, and that is it.
The, one last thing too, in case anybody's interested, the tech school does grow and sell plants, and they are having a fifty percent off sale. Um, if you're interested, and they have annuals, perennials, uh, vegetables, fruits, that type of thing. Uh, if you're interested, just go up to the tech school during business hours and go in and say that you would like to look at the plants, and they'll take you out to the greenhouse.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
And I am done.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, that brings us, uh, to the President's Report, and, um, I just wanna remind all of my fellow board members, if you would, please, uh, let the Board Secretary know if you're planning on attending graduation. Uh, she's gonna need to know that information. And that, that is coming up on June seventh, so it's right around the corner. All right, next up is items for board action. And this would be to appoint a right-to-know officer, appoint an Assistant Board Secretary, and to appoint the Board Treasurer. The Right-to-Know Law, Act Three of two thousand and eight, requires school districts to appoint an open records officer who is responsible for receiving requests submitted to the agency under the act, directing requests, tracking progress on the requests, and issuing responses under the act. The administration is recommending Executive Assistant Heidi Johnson for the position. Next is to appoint the Board Treasurer. The Board Treasurer's term expires June thirty, 2018. Administration is recommending that the Board appoint Ms. Lynn Ralston to a one-year term as Treasurer, beginning July one, 2018, with no compensation for the position, and to be bonded in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Okay.
Did you skip the Assistant Board Secretary one? Did I miss that?
No, I, I didn't, because I don't want Alice to leave. No, no offense, Anita. All right, since you brought it up, appointment of the Assistant Board Secretary. In the absence of the Board Secretary, the administration is recommending that Anita M. Caseman be appointed as Assistant Board Secretary effective June nine, 2018, to June thirty, 2018. Yes, you can go on vacation. Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the Items for Board Action?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson? I'm sorry, who seconded that? Mr. Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussions?
Can I motion to block her going on vacation?
So what does, what does being bonded twenty thousand dollars mean?
Yeah, I, I think, um-
Insurance.
It, it's insurance in case-
It's fiduciary insurance, basically. If somebody steals money, you have a certain level of, of contribution from the bonding company to pay any thefts that may occur.
Okay. No, it's just, I, I, I didn't know what it meant. It was, I don't know.
Okay.
Carried a twenty grand around and we just let you hold it?
Yeah, any other, uh, any other discussion? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have the public comment on fiscal items presented for vote tonight. Is there any public comment? All right, moving along. We have the fiscal agenda. Uh, item one is to approve the April 2018 Boucher and James, Boucher and James Bills List. All right, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Akmanowicz, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Weed, discussion? All right, no discussion. Uh, do, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention, Mr. Jackson? The motion passes.
I abstain, too.
Pardon?
He's abstaining.
I abstain.
Oh, okay. New, new guy abstains.
I had no idea. I wasn't prepared for the, this vote, so, uh-
Yeah, it's totally cool.
It's up to you.
Yep.
No worries. Motion still passes with two abstentions. Okay, moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. We're to approve the April 2018 Bills List, approve the April 2018 Budget Transfers, approve the April 2018 Treasurers Report, approve the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number Twenty-two Technology Pool Council, LSA, for 2018-2019, approve production contract with Rack Sound for the 2018 Eighth Grade Formal, June one, 2018, approve contracts with Let's Bounce Around Rentals LLC for Strayer Middle School and the High School, approve contract with Chris Clark Mountain Bike Stunt Program for Poff Elementary School, approve contract with A Plus Entertainment for 2018 Senior Prom, May twenty-six, 2018, approve contract with All Around Entertainment for Tahican Valley Elementary School, approve the 2018-2019 Student Accident and Voluntary Insurance Renewal, approve depositories for 2018-2019 School Year, approve Dewey Engineering, Inc., as Construction Manager for the Nightig Elementary School Renovation and Edition Project. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. McCucci, seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Discussion?
Mr. DeLaBerto, don't be overwhelmed by these long lists of things, because I wanna highlight, uh, letter G, the Mountain Bike Stunt Program we're about to approve, happened on Tuesday. It's already over and done with. So don't get overwhelmed by these, these things in front of you.
It's basically just saying we'll pay the bill. Yeah.
You, you mean, we can't go ride a stunt bike? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, next is the public comment on the Facilities Consent Agenda. Would anybody have any comment regarding the Facilities Consent Agenda? Okay, the Facilities Consent Agenda. Approve the KPN Contract with Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc., approve the Service Agreement with Royal Throne Portable Toilets. It's a great name, Royal Throne. Approve the three-year contract with Medflex, Inc., approve the contract with Nice Construction Services, and approve the contract with Ecotrol, Inc. Do I have a motion to approve the Facilities Consent Agenda as presented?
I'll motion.
Second.
Mitchell, seconded by Mr. Jackson. Discussion?
I just wanna point out, so the first item that's talking about the KPN, that is the, the Trumbausville Elementary School Roof, um, and that's, that's a big-ticket item, seven twenty, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, we have to fix it, but just wanted to point that out.
Question from Mr. Garten and Mr. Shawk, I guess. The, the bid for, um, the Sixth Grade Center paving included the base and one alternate that's being approved tonight, but there are three alternates that are left off. If we should cho- choose at a later date to approve them, they were bid, we did not approve them now, do, do their bids at this alternate price stand for a certain period? And can we approve them at a later date if we so choose? Or must it be rebid from the beginning with new effort for them to change their prices?
You would not be able to award the bid subsequently, but you could negotiate a change order if you chose to, reflecting that additional work.
Oh, you're, you're asking more about the electric?
The, the additional.
Yeah, the addition, there's three, there's three additional alternates that aren't being approved tonight. We're only approving the, the base bid and alternate number one. That leaves out, uh, an extra paving and two lighting issues. Okay, the question is, what happens if, you know, in six months, we decide, gee, we really wanna do that? Can we, can't, we can't call them up now and say, hey, you get, you quoted us this price, go do it, we'll pay you that much. We're kinda starting from scratch, or we're telling them to give us a new number.
Yeah, so we, we actually talked about that at the Facilities Meeting, and, um, so there was, there was some thought behind, um, uh, more the electric. That the conduit and stuff will be in place, so there will be no digging up of, am I correct? It was what we talked about. So it'll be set up for electric to be installed at a later date, and it can, it may be done by our own folks at a cheaper rate.
Yeah, that's the one main call out.
This is the, this is, this is something that we could save money on doing it internally. So it'll be prepared for electric. If we don't approve it tonight, we're still okay. The biggest thing, the biggest question was this back strip, um, which is the, the parking, uh, the driveway behind the Sixth Grade Center. Between the track and the building. And we had discussion on whether we wanted to put that forward or not. We didn't choose to do it, um, to save the money, but just so you guys know, it's, it may be more expensive down the road because they're not doing the entire lot. They're gonna have to come in and separately do it. So, it doesn't look like it's in terrible condition. I run back there, but, you know, I was open to any, anybody's thought. I was trying to be a little bit more fiscally responsible. It's not a huge, uh, amount of money, um, twenty-six thousand, but it's twenty-six thousand dollars that if we don't have to spend it today, we could save it and figure it out down the road. Yeah, no, I just wanted to let you know, that was a discussion at the Facilities Meeting, so.
Does anybody have any strong feelings about that pathway back there? That, I mean, the driveway, repaving the driveway back there?
For the record, I just shook my head no, but I, I haven't been back there to see if there's like, you know, huge potholes or anything that'll damage somebody's car.
There's no potholes.
You mean, you don't run with Mr. McCucci?
Minimal.
I don't run.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a public comment on the Human Resources Items being presented for a vote tonight. Okay, no public comment there. The Human Resources Consent Agenda consists of professional staff, support staff, supervisory technology staff, twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen unit pay, and substitute nurses and aides, nurses and principals. Um, and, um, for those of you that are on board docs, there's a, a long, long list of, of names and, and information on there, which I will save everybody the tedious boredom of me reading. So, do I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda as presented?
I'll motion.
Ms. Mitchell, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Weed, discussion? Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, public comment on Office of Teaching and Learning Items Presented for a Vote. All right, no public comment there. We have the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda. First up is the Office of Teening, of Teaching and Learning Consent presents the following textbooks for approval for the 2018-2019 school year. The first one is Literature and Composition by Carl Jago, Renee H. Shea, Lawrence Scanlon, and Robert Disson Offes, I'm butchering that. Second Edition, BFW Publishers. Second book is Advanced Language and Literature by Renee H. Shea, John Golden, Lance Bella, for honors and pre-AP English courses, BFW Publishers. The third book is Foundations of Language and Literature by Renee H. Shea, John Golden, and Tracy Schultz, for honors and pre-AP English courses, BFW Publishers. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Mr. Kern?
And second.
Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussion?
Just like to point out that Renee Shea writes a lot of books.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Say she's one of my favorites. Really influential, this Renee.
I, I have a lot of, uh, trust in, uh, Dr. Hoffman. I just, I'm just curious, um, the teachers pretty supportive of the choices?
They are, they were, um, on the committee, and at the last Education Committee, actually, uh, two of the teachers who spearheaded that committee came and spoke, um, and did a presentation to the Education Committee, um, about, you know, what they, the work that they had done and, and their recommendations. So I would say definitely, yes.
Great.
Okay, any other discussion? And for the record, I too have a lot of faith in Dr. Hoffman.
Well-
I do as well.
You feeling the love?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is public comment on Policies and Program Items Being Presented for a Vote Tonight. Okay, very good. The Policy and Programs Consent Agenda. One is to approve board policies. Um, Ms. Weed spoke of that in her committee report. Second is to approve letter of agreement with the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania, Inc. Third is to approve legal services, consultation agreement with Sweet Stevens Katz and Williams, LLP, for 2018-2019. Next is approve agreements with the Pathway School for extended school year. Next is approve services agreement with Valley Forge Educational Services. Next is to approve agreement with the Montgomery County IU Number Twenty-three for 2018-2019. Next is approve agreement with the Lakeside Youth Services for 2018-2019. Next is to approve settlement agreement with student number fifteen-nine-seven-eight, followed by approve agreement with Maricay, Philadelphia, for 2018-2019. Do I have a motion to approve the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda as presented? Mr. Kern?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Jackson. Discussion?
I have a question on the Legal Services Contract for our attorney. Are, are, you're not with the Sweet firm, though?
The IU contracts with Sweet Stevens to provide the entire IU group with services related to IT questions.
Okay.
So they, they provide special services.
If I can add-
Go ahead, make the addition to that.
Joe? This is- Is it, then it's Jan, not the IT question, is it about the Janet?
Well, I was looking at the contract.
Is this the eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a flat fee. It's a flat fee.
Please, Janet?
Sure, this is similar to what we have, uh, with the pool council for tech. Theirs is run through the IU- through the IU. Ours is a separate contract that is not with Jeff, with a different agency, but it's a really great service for us as administrators. Our principals are able to call and not use billable hours, per se, so it's actually more of a discount. And our attorney, he also represents us if we have any legal issues as well. But for non-legal issues, we can call him any day, all day, for that eight thousand, as well as have him come in to provide in-service for four days to our administrators, our school staff. He's presented to our special ed staff. They've enjoyed and appreciated time with Mark Walls as well.
So it's a special ed consortium?
Pool council, right.
If I may add?
No, I just wondered what it was for.
If I may add, for the newer board members, and definitely for Mr. De Alberta, we have our solicitor is Mr. Garten. And the full name of the firm is?
Let me think. Biggie, Carl, and Mandia.
And Jeff's been with us for four and a half years as our solicitor. We have services for, for our students with disabilities and pupil services. That's with Katz, Sweet, and Stevens. And Mark Walls is, is our primary attorney with them. He is also the expert for the, I think for the state for technology issues. And so he's on retainer for IT, and he's also our attorney for special education. He's been, he's advised me in my previous district for five years, and when I moved here, they, the law firm moved him into, to working here with us, and he's phenomenal. So that's how our, and then if we need a, like when we had an issue for construction at the high school renovation project, we went to a different law firm that specializes in those kind of issues.
Can you explain to me what the, for technology part, like eight thousand dollars, he consults for questions regarding?
The technology is only eight hundred and four dollars. These are two separate contracts. So for technology, it's eight hundred dollars a year, and that's Bucks County, you does that, but it's actually part of PAU net.
Okay, so it was only eight hundred, but I kind of read the numbers.
Well, there's two different ones here, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One's technology, special education.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of the policy and programs consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. This brings us to information items. We have a graduation coming up, June seventh. Board members should arrive at six-thirty, and we will be seated on the stage. We will be entering the arena below section one-ten. That is also where they have a lounge for us to hang out and gather beforehand. So meet below section one-ten by six-thirty PM. Directions and parking information is on board docs. We have a thank you note from St. Luke's Quakertown campus. Dr. Harner, that note was addressed to you briefly. What, what was it for?
Excuse me, sir.
St. Luke's.
Oh, it's just a thank you note for using our parking lot for the reception over here and groundbreaking ceremony.
Okay.
And our, our students participated there. Our students creating a video of their groundbreaking interview to the president, Senator Mench, president of QNB, Dave Freeman, and a whole bunch of others, and putting together a video for it. So he was just thanking us for that.
Very nice. How much did we get for the parking?
Good neighbor status?
Okay, very good.
Thank you. You were waiting for an answer?
I don't know, there's some, there's some places that are getting a lot of money.
I could picture Dr. Harner out there wearing a bib and, you know, twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars a car, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your imagination, sir.
You're quite welcome, sir. Okay, any new board business or comments?
I do want to bring one thing to the discussion, and something I emailed everybody about. And it's really kind of thinking about safety and security as we move forward as a district, and where does that lie at the board level? You know, with all the tragedies that we're seeing in the news, it just makes me sit and think and wonder, what could we be doing better? Are we doing enough? I know we have, we have a committee, a safety committee here, which I was a part of one meeting so far. But my recommendation is to further explore what other safety mechanisms we should be putting in place at both the high school, middle school, and then, and then maybe the assessment of the elementary schools. So I want to open that up to the board for discussion and think, think maybe, you know, do we, do we form a smaller subcommittee off of one of the other committees where we can talk specifically about safety and security with maybe experts and go from there. So I am not an expert, but, you know, I'd be open to seeing what we can do. Be wondering what the, what the community thinks as well.
Mr. President, if I may, can I just say that that sounds like a facilities committee issue? And not to dismiss it, certainly, I think, are you in the facilities committee? Or you just kind of attend them, attend them all, right? Okay, so, I mean, that'd be the place to kick it around. I don't feel like creating a special safety committee. You know, it's always more government rather than less government. I'd rather see fewer committees where possible. That sounds like something that the facilities committee could easily undertake. I know that in addition to the safety committee, Dr. Harner sent out an invitation to board members the other day for a incident response meeting the boroughs were having, the Miss Palas were having with the police department, which I was up in attendance on that day, and they're undertaking the same kind of discussion. In a roundabout way, it's more about incident response, more so than original, you know, initial safety, but it's certainly being kicked around. So there's a lot of people talking about it to our benefit as well. But if it's a board level discussion, I think it belongs in the facilities committee.
Yeah, and I would think, I would, I would argue that their job is more of a strategy for how you deal with it. Our job is to, how do you prevent it?
I will say this, Mr. McCucci, that I know that, that safety is first and foremost on Dr. Harner's mind. I know he does an awful lot of work behind the scenes. I know he's constantly evaluating and reevaluating the safety of our schools. And I thank him for doing so. Sir, I think you think, I think you do a wonderful job in that regard. However, I would say that, you know, given the climate in today's world, I certainly wouldn't have a problem with more people discussing it. You know, if, if any of the other board members would like, you know, to get together and, and do that, Mr. Jackson, whether it be through the, the facilities committee, or possibly forming another ad hoc committee, I mean, I'd be open to that, and I'm curious what the other board members think.
I'm certainly open to that. I really, as I mentioned in my email this week, or last week, whichever one it was, I think that it may be prudent on our behalf to bring in some type of consultant and to take a look at, you know, what are security ways? And I know that we are, you know, we do a great job at security. We've made improvements over the years. But just ways that we can improve, we can always look at those, those items.
Well, just for the newer board members, four and a half years, summer of twenty-fourteen, we brought in the consultant. And, and he came back in twenty-fifteen and worked with us over a two-year period to begin our planning process, because we had, we talked safety, but we didn't have any plans. And so we've been working with that. Ms. Edwards, would you like to talk about that a little bit, about your committee? That'd probably be a good way to, to just familiarize, since, since I know Mr. Garten doesn't have any place to go.
Listen, I have no place to go. Where else would I rather be?
Well, I would not want to disappoint you, Mr. Garten, so I'm happy to speak to that. The critical incident committee meets multiple times a year, and we do a couple different things. We take the after-action review from all of the drills and things we do. We do multiple tabletop activities during the year with the boroughs, the police, personnel, EMS. We did a tabletop just, was that still this week?
That was Monday, believe it or not.
It must have been a really long week, but it was just this week. But we spent the afternoon at Borough Hall in Quakertown doing a tabletop drill that the Bucks County EOC had put together for us. So they did the scenario, and then we did the tabletop drill with the scenario that they created. So every time we either have an incident or activity, for example, our weather, the day that we had to dismiss early in the, you know, day that the heavens just opened up over Quakertown and dropped, you know, six inches of snow in twenty minutes, or when the students did their, their walkout and their remembrance of the students who had died at Parkland, and we used that as a critical incident drill opportunity and did like a full response, we do an after-action review. So we, you know, identify things that went well, things we could do better, things we want to look into. And then the trick is to take all those things and make sure they actually get converted into action steps, so that somebody's actually doing something, so that we don't have the same conversations repeatedly. So, so we, we then translate that into action steps, and we follow up on those. And then periodically, we meet as a team to review, you know, what we still need to be doing and, and to move forward. Another recent activity, and I think, Mr. McCucci, this is the meeting that you attended, we looked at a, a better app that would allow us to retain for administrators and, and teachers to have more information in their hands, including things like their class lists and things that right now, we have a process for it, but it's not all electronic. And, and so we're looking into that. And Mr. Cuzzo's been working on, on, you know, our plan so that next year, we'd be moving to that app. So those are the kinds of things that we talk about. You know, we review what happened, what we can improve. Some of them are facilities. Kelly gets a lot of homework assignments. Is that fair, Kelly? Yeah, yeah. He gets a lot of homework assignments from the committee. So that, that is what we're doing currently, and it is an ongoing process. It's not a once and, you know, we talked about it once and we're done. Like, we're constantly revisiting it.
And also, ma'am, after every incident we've had, like the nor'easter bomb threat eighteen months ago that we had at the high school that came from Russia of all places?
What?
Yes. The caller came, the machine that sent out the robo-call came from Russia.
So it was a Russian bot, really?
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't know if they call it a bot, but I just know that.
They're all over Twitter.
Is it possible that it was like some kind of way scrambled to where we think it's from Russia, but it wasn't?
Well, that's what the, the report came from, the police officials. But after those kind of events, after the student walkout that we had spent a lot of time planning on, pre-planning, and then after the event, we had an AAR, after-action review. So we do, think, think back to the hundred and first days, that's, those are the kind of things we're doing behind the scenes, but we prefer not to go into detail in the public because we don't want folks to, might be someone who might be a perpetrator to, to know how we'll, we will respond. But I would.
And I, and I think, you know, let me just maybe focus my, my discussion a little bit finer. It's not, I mean, I'm sure that all that stuff, and I know you guys do a ton of work around after-action reviews and things along those, those lines. But are there strategies, things that from a board level, we could be doing, giving you some additional money to make changes that would prevent something possibly, maybe that's securing doors, maybe that's, I don't know what that looks like. I'm just throwing out ideas. But is there something that's bigger that we should be looking at from our standpoint?
Well, I guess the question stems from the article in the newspaper a couple weeks ago. Center Bucks hired themselves such a consultant for about sixty grand a year. It was something like that, sixty-six thousand dollars. Are you suggesting we may need to bring in an outside agency of some type from some location to review our policies? Or it sounds like we're doing a lot right now. Perhaps it's just a matter of an executive session, because this is a security matter, and I would think this kind of discussion would be privileged. Dr., you know, Mr. Garten, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about the security of our schools here, not advertising these things. Perhaps this could be an executive session where the administration details for the board, these are all the steps we've have in place, so that we would know, and then we can make an informed decision. Well, we'd like to see somebody else come in and give us additional ideas.
Yeah, no, I'm not, and I'm not a big consultant guy. I mean, you have, you have a ton of resources. I mean, we have a, a great school resource officer. We have a great school resource program. Doesn't need to be expanded, is my question.
Who made the call?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you know.
I think the administration would probably need to make that recommendation.
I would like to kind of chunk this into different kinds of categories. One, we talked about this at our board retreat a couple weeks ago, and you brought it up, as safety being a major focus for next, next academic year. At the larger level, I'd like to look at the prevention piece. We're looking at mental health. Are counseling services designed to be, to provide that kind of service? We've done a lot of things, couldn't be better? Probably yes. As in the prevention category, working with another school resource officer. There, I have not received many comments from the community on things, except that we know you're focusing on this thing. Thank you. Well, one of those things I'd like, and I've talked to several of you, and I sent out an email, I'd like to have another school resource officer that we, at Strayer Middle School, it's a large school, a lot of issues, Richland Township, a school right next door. So we just have that prevention there. Now, it may appear, I don't want to have anyone to think we're militarizing our schools or hardening our, the target, because it's, to prevent a lot of this stuff, because I read all the articles that's out there about all these different incidences, and the ones went, I guess, since I started getting into business when Columbine happened in the nineties. I was a high school principal at the time, and I had a threat like that at my building, and I shut the building down for a day, and I had dog, bomb dogs go through. It was pretty intense for about nine, nine days in my high school when I was a principal, been through it. So I'd like to chunk this down. I think having, with all due respect, sir, I'd like, I think having a committee of a couple people who are interested in the safety, providing us the policy support and the board conduit, then to get some work done here through the summer and into the fall.
I think that's, that's an excellent idea, sir.
And if you don't mind, can you, I think we probably have some things like on our wish list that you could give us direction, or the administration could, from the previous consultation, if you want to provide us with, if you could provide us with, like the report from a few years ago, the new board members?
Okay.
That would be, I think that would be.
Well, the company that, that has been, was discussed in the front page of the paper, MG Tactical, they're, they're the people that I used in my previous district, because the gentleman who, the family gentleman who runs it is the next school district over in Carlisle. So we, they came in here, we brought in supervisors, elected officials, we brought in township managers, we brought in police officials, we had involved all EMS, first responders, St. Luke's, fire, and auxiliary police. All these people have been participating in our exercise. We had forty people on Monday in the room, and it, with all different kinds of things, and we faced it, just like a military operation. This incident happened, what do you do?
Yeah.
And it goes around the room. And then afterwards, we had a good reflection session. And so.
Sir, I'm sorry.
We can always do a lot more.
What's the procedure to establish an ad hoc committee? It sounds like there's a desire to establish an ad hoc committee.
What I was just gonna ask Dr. Harner to do is to come up by our next board meeting, if you would, sir, with a recommendation of what you would like to see in the way of a committee. If there's administration people that you would like to see on it, and then what we can do is, is determine, you know, which board members will be interested in serving on that committee.
And, and part of that, so you can say you heard it tonight, and then sit down later on, one of the things the team, the cabinet has been talking about is forming a community committee of parents and other community members that report up to this ad hoc committee of the board. Because you're, the more we get involved, our hands around it, because we have issues with drugs, we have issues of violence, bullying, and all these kind of things, mental health, personal mental health versus issue, mental health issues that are brought on by being bullied or something else. We need, we need to tackle that. And there's a lot of community resources, and I'd like to chunk, put that in different chunks, and then bring that up to a board level committee.
Could, could you give us an outline, then, by the next meeting, of how you would envision that looking?
Here to serve. Yes, sir. We'll get it done.
Thank you. And that, that sounds like an excellent idea, by the way, involving the. And that, and that sounds like an excellent idea, by the way, involving the community.
And, and I'll just add, Dr. Harner knows this, but, um, my side project, although I'm part owner, so it probably disqualifies that company from helping us, but, um, or one of our principals happens to be the chair of the National Fire Protection Association Committee on Pre-Incident Planning. I build software for pre-incident planning that would solve your needs, but I know we probably can't buy it. Um, but I've toured places like...
You could donate it.
That's probably not legal either.
Come on.
Came in to present to us, but they did, and it's a great piece of software to help us with our planning, facilities planning for all kinds of different scenarios. But because of his relationship...
I'd have to resign.
Oh, there's a thought.
What?
Be of a board member.
There you go.
There's a plan. Um, but anyway, I don't know if that can be a resource, and certainly, it was phenomenal to go on a tour of like Middle Bucks Institute with a SWAT team member in the fire, because we do things, I mean, our guys do tabletop drills, and we, we do all that for, well, I don't, I just write code, but, um, but anyway, I don't know if that can be a help. You know, certainly, we have people in the right places in that, that side of the pre- it's pre-incident response, it's for pre-planning, is what we call it.
Thank you, sir. We accept a donation.
Card for president.
Additional new business item?
Yes, sir.
Have we kicked this one around enough? Um, the members of the board were having, um, email discussions recently about continued participation in graduation. Is that a topic better left till after the graduation, or in the next two meetings, or do you want to pick it up right now?
Well, I think, you know, uh, but we certainly don't believe that, that we should make any major changes this close to graduation.
Correct.
So, um, I think maybe that's, my opinion is, you know, maybe, maybe we can have a discussion after graduation, uh, as, as it pertains to future graduations.
We do have two more meetings before the, uh, summer break, so if you want to kick it back to the, the last one in June even?
That's fine with me.
I don't understand what we'd be changing. Like, we're not going to make a mandate, are we? We're just talking about...
No, it, Mr. Jackson's...
What participation, what, in what manner should the board participate in graduation, if at all?
I see. You're talking about handing out the actual diplomas and...
I'm not limited on myself to that. I'm, should we be on the stage? Should we even be present?
Yeah.
Should we dress in gowns?
Yeah.
Should we, all of that?
I got you. Yeah, maybe after graduation.
Well, I get to hand a diploma to my daughter, don't I? You'll let, you'll let me do that? Okay. In two weeks. And Leo, I've known you a long time, and you're one of my favorite kids. I'd be happy to hand yours to...
After you voted against him? After you voted against him? He, you think he's going to...
Well, reluctantly. Reluctantly. Leo knows how much I...
That's not cool.
Leo knows how impressed I am by him. He knows.
Yeah, you should, you should enjoy your college time. I'll talk to you after this, but you, trust me, we did you a favor.
But yeah, let, let's have that discussion.
I'm just saying, it's a lot of responsibility. You should enjoy your, you're young. You should enjoy your time. I wasn't saying it like that, guys. Geez.
Any, any other new board business?
I, I do want to mention out loud for the interest of the public, anybody who's listening out there, maybe, um, there is a compressor station, uh, that's going to be installed in the Adelphia Pipeline and is about a mile and a half from, uh, Trumbiersville Elementary. Um, I am in the beginning stages of doing some research in regards to what the pumping stations give out in the form of excess pollution, uh, wind pollution, and, and how much, often and frequently, the school is downwind from that compressor station. If anybody out there is interested in assisting me, uh, with that project, I'd be interested in hearing from you.
And I am definitely in support of doing more research on that. I think anything that's going to interfere, especially pollute our environment just in general, but more specifically to our kids, is definitely a concern.
Agreed. If there's no further new board business, uh, we move to the last general public comment of the evening. Mr. Ritter?
We have one of the Richland Township Supervisors with us tonight. That would be Mr. Ritter.
Hi, I'm, uh, Tim Ritter from Richland Township. I'm here tonight as a parrot. Uh, but before I get into that, I do want to say I appreciate all of you. You make the work that I see as a township supervisor look easy. Uh, I don't want to scare the new guy. It's rewarding, too. Uh, my question is, uh, for Mrs. Weed specifically, as, uh, you're chairman of the policy committee...
Mr. Ritter, I'm, I'm going to stop you right there, if you don't mind. That's okay. Um, our policy permits...
We address the board.
You, you would address me.
Okay.
Not to address board members directly. I'm sorry. I, I know I'm standing on the rules here, but we're, we're trying to make the public comment thing more in line with our rules, so...
Okay, absolutely. I apologize.
That's quite all right.
Uh, it's a policy question. We have a, I did some digging through our, our policy. We have a weapon policy, uh, drug policy, bullying policy. My question is, do we have an omnibus discipline policy so that we would have a, like a defensible foundation for, um, you know, um, committing actions and...
Okay. I, I believe the answer to that is yes, and I'm going to ask Ms. Edwards if she has...
We really don't, do we? Because, I mean, Ms., Ms. Edwards, when I was on the policy committee, I looked at all the policies as well. Pretty much every one of those previous ones you mentioned, the drug policy, the weapons policy, the bullying policy, almost to a line, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Edwards, they say that discipline shall be at the discretion of the principal, essentially. There's levels, you know, maximum of this, minimum of that, but there's a lot of language in there that allows discretion for everything up to the administrator, building administrator. Now, we can kick it around here, whether that's a good or bad thing. I could come up with a number of scenarios where you do not want to set a maximum penalty for somebody who does something that clearly, you know, we all know stories about people who have no tolerance laws for weapons or whatever, and for the silliest little things, a five-year-old will get suspended. Okay? We don't necessarily want to have that, so I believe that's why the policies are as vague as they are. Are you suggesting we need to come up with a more strict definition? If you do this, this is the consequence you will suffer? If you do this, this is the consequence you will suffer?
Uh, well, the, the reason I ask, um, having four kids in the district, I see a lot of variation on, um, how discipline is meted out, or if it is at all, in many cases. I, I know one of the principals, I think at a middle school, done some work three or four years ago. I don't know if his work was ever brought to a vote and voted on as far as, uh, an overarching discipline policy. Just so you have a defensible foundation, as Mr. Garten would appreciate, you know, and something on paper can be defended. Uh, Ms. Edwards, do you have an...
Sorry, I think we have a policy related to procedures and so forth. We also have a student code of conduct, do we not? As far as weapons, there's a statutory section on weapons that's pretty clear about consequences if you bring a weapon to school. So, I think we are, I think we need to share with Mr. Ritter where our current policies are to make sure that he understands what we do and don't have. If it needs improvement, then I think it's appropriate for the policy committee to take a look.
Right. Weapons, drugs, and bullying are covered well, but everything from talking in class to assault and battery? I mean, do, do we have a, a codified, uh, policy on that?
Ms. Edwards?
Yes, I believe we have a reasonable coverage of different kinds of circumstances that require student discipline. My, more minor issues are dealt with through the code of conduct in the individual buildings, and many of those are handled at the classroom level. Um, the higher impact issues like weapons, threats, drugs, um, there are specific policies that detail what the, the range of appropriate discipline is for those, um, circumstances. So, very, very low-level issues are handled at the building level and often at the classroom level.
Okay.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Are you asking for, uh, just, I'm a little confused, I'm trying to follow...
Well, when you and I went to school, we had like a demerit system, detention, suspensions, that sort of thing. It, is our discipline codified or treated, uh, treated as a case-by-case basis?
Okay, got you.
And do we have specifically defined what's protected by, um, IEPs and, um, what's the other one? The 503s, uh, that sort of thing?
So, there, yeah, so you're asking for, well, I'm just, just trying to think, are you asking for like sort of an algorithm of this, then that, based on...
Right.
Based on, uh, I don't know, you have the, you know, low-end, mean, high...
Do the kids know what consequences are of their behavior?
I think the challenge, though, and what I've learned, um, at least as far as some kids who have special needs, um, or may have like an IEP or something like you mentioned, would have varying, um, requirements from the district perspective from, of what we're allowed to do and what we're allowed to pursue. Um, so just keep that in mind. So, for instance, I'll give you an example. If someone has issues with their emotional, like, stability or something like that, um, there, it, if they have that, that, um, special need, then they would, we, we would, of course, be obligated, um, to try and support that student in that special way, if that makes sense.
Certainly, yeah. Then, um, that was bringing me to follow-up question. Uh, do we have any plans to put in place emotional support rooms in any of the larger schools? Sixth grade center, Strayer, well, Strayer might have one. Sixth grade center...
Can I ask Ms. Palone to answer this?
I, I was going to suggest that, yes. Ms. Palone, would you?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so we do have an emotional support program at the elementary level. That's housed at top. There are actually two classrooms, so there's a K through, uh, second grade, um, emotional support teacher. There's also a third through fifth grade emotional support. Uh, students in any of the elementaries are, um, handled, are, there are penalties or through that program there. Our, um, sixth grade center this year did not have one, based on student need coming from that feeder, um, program, but there will be one next year at the sixth grade center. Currently, there does exist an emotional support program in classroom at the, uh, Strayer 78 Building, and there is one at the high school as well. We've increased staffing, uh, last year and the year prior to, uh, get that program.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ritter.
A way of clarity. Only the board can mete out penalties in excess of 10-day suspension. So, the administrators are limited to 10-day suspension. Board can mete out expulsions and additional suspensions, but the only authority building principals have is up to 10 days.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garten.
Okay.
Mr. Ritter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, I apologize for the protocol violation.
That's quite all right. That's quite all right.
Tim, you, you waited like three hours just to ask that question. We... Thank you. I hope the answer was acceptable and what you were looking for.
Any other public comment? Okay, we have some information items for everyone. Of course, we have our graduation coming up on Thursday, June 7th, at 7:00 PM at the PPL Center in Allentown. On Thursday, June 14th, at 6:00 PM, the Education and Curriculum Committee meeting here in Community Room A. Also, at 6 o'clock, there's a Facilities Committee meeting in the Board Caucus Conference Room 3. Both are followed at 7:00 by work session, regular voting meeting here at the Community Room in the DSC. Thursday, June 28th, at 5:45, there's a Policy Committee meeting in the Board Caucus Conference Room 3, and I'm sure Mr. Ritter will be in attendance.